Okay. I'd like to welcome you to the Town of Barnstable Town Council Meeting for January 30th, 2025. In accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 38, Section 20, I must inquire whether anyone is recording this meeting, and if so, to please make your presence known. Seeing no one. This meeting is televised live via Xfinity Channel 8 or 1070 or High Definition Channel 1072, or may be accessed via the Government Access Channel livestream feed. At public comment, please make sure you sign in with your name and village when you come up to make public comment. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker. Please keep your comments brief and to the point. Written comments are always welcome at council@town.barnstable MA.us and will be distributed to the entire council by our administrative assistant. Okay. Starting the meeting. Madam Clerk, can we have a roll call, please?
Councillors. Bloom.
Here.
Burdick.
Present.
Clark.
Here.
Crowe.
Here.
Levesque.
Here.
Ludke.
Mendez.
Here.
Neary.
Penn.
Here.
Schnep.
Here.
Starr.
Tamish.
Here.
Turkelson.
Here.
Madam Clerk, I see that Gordon Starr just showed up on Zoom.
Starr, are you there? He's trying to unmute.
Okay.
I can see he's there. Okay.
Okay. There he is. Okay. Pledge of allegiance, Vice President Clark.
Thank you very much, President. Tamish, we welcome veteran Peter Bullock. Peter Bullock joined the Navy in December 1988, right out of high school. He was sent to Orlando, Florida for boot camp. Upon graduation, he was flown to Great Lakes, Illinois for Electrician's Mate A School. By December 1989, he was serving aboard the USS Waddell. The USS Waddell DDG-24 was a Charles F. Abrams class-guided missile destroyer. He then volunteered for basic underwater demolition SEAL training but was not selected to advance in that program. Peter's next assignment was to the USS Dixon, an LY Spear-class submarine tender. His final assignment in the U.S. Navy was at the Navy Explosive Ordnance Disposal School. He assisted with training by maintaining the training aids and materials by performing motor repairs to outboards and electrical repairs on small boats and dive platforms. He left the Navy in February 1998. He now resides with his family in Marston's Mills. Welcome very much, Mr. Bullock.
Thank you. [applause] I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. If you could remain standing for a moment of silence, and I'd like all of us to think of those who perished in the tragedy in Washington, D.C., and both on the airliner and on the Black Hawk helicopter, and all those that are near and dear to us. Okay. We will start public comment, and as I said, please keep your comments to three minutes.
My name is Suzanne Conley. I'm from Osterville. President Tamish, councillors. I have been an interested observer rather than an active participant in the ongoing LCP process, probably to everyone's relief. I truly appreciate the hard work being done by so many Barnstable residents to make this a community-based exercise. Tonight, however, I'd like to present to you a hypothetical situation. Suppose hypothetically I had submitted the following comment in the planning category "Natural Resources." Quote, "The town should oppose offshore wind power despite the claims of the woefully uninformed that these projects will mitigate climate change." Suppose hypothetically that comment received exactly zero likes from my fellow townspeople, was the only comment of its kind that is in opposition in support of offshore, I'm sorry, in opposition to offshore wind. However, during the public comment distilling process, this sentiment was represented in LCP documents as awaited finding of public opinion with the published statement, quote, "The town will oppose renewable energy in the form of offshore wind." That would be a ludicrous outcome and indicate, in my opinion, an extremely flawed process that should capture the attention of Town Council. In fact, the opposite but exact scenario actually occurred. One person's comment read, quote, "The best way to save our beaches is to limit the damage caused by climate change. Offshore renewable energy can do that in spite of what these nimbus forces say." This singular statement was somehow adopted and translated into a possible future goal in LCP's most recent document, suggesting the town, quote, "limit the impact of climate change by supporting offshore renewable wind energy." I have read through all public comments and see no other that even approximates that writer's sentiment. In fact, that is quite surprising, given our communities' ongoing debate over cable landings on our public beaches. I am asking the councillors intimately involved with this project to discourage any credence being given by authors of planning department documents to any comment that disparages or belittles the views of fellow citizens, and to be careful that the process used to distill public sentiment avoids what I believe is clearly gross misrepresentation. This is all encouraging me to do my civic duty in the days ahead and submit a balanced and thoughtful comment to the LCP about ways our town can contribute in any number of ways to a sensible, measured transition.
Can you wrap up your comments, please?
Yep. A sensible, measured transition to a cleaner energy future for all of us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. [applause] Madam Clerk, if you could indicate that Counsel Ludke has joined us on Zoom. Hi. Could you just state your name and village, please?
Yes. Thank you for taking the time to listen to me tonight. My name is Anne Firth, and I live at 31 Hartford Ave. in Marston's Mills, and I am here to ask your support to renew the RFP for Meeting House Farm in West Barnstable. My husband and I owned and operated a small garden design, planting, and maintenance business here on the Cape for nearly 40 years. I have been a master gardener since 1990, and I am the host of Garden Line radio show, which is broadcast every Saturday morning on WXTK. We have rented a garden plot and a greenhouse bench at Meeting House Farm since the first year those were open to the public, which was in 2010. In those 14 years, I have met wonderful people there from all over town. In that time, I have both benefited from the programs the farm has offered, and I have donated my time to give educational garden-related programs each year. The majority of these were open to the public. Since its inception, the farm has always been a place for anyone from anywhere to walk and take in nature. Many times, I have met people from diverse areas, including other parts of the country, enjoying the natural beauty at the farm. Over the past 14 years that I have been involved, many improvements have been made, mostly paid for through fundraising and at no cost to the town. Some examples include replacing the foundation and sill on the bond that is attached to the greenhouse, routinely replacing glass on the historic yet fragile greenhouse, creating flower and herb gardens for the public to stroll through, and just last year, adding an attractive yet practical fence around vegetable gardens to help keep the farm's diverse animal population out of the gardens. It took many years with much fundraising and much effort to build a labyrinth out back for the public to use for a form of reflection and for meditation. Among these who use the labyrinth is a group of veterans, but it is open to anyone, any day, at no charge. There are programs for towns' fourth graders in environmental science, as well as frequent opportunities for people of different age groups with physical or mental disabilities that allow them to spend quality time outdoors on the farm's grounds. For example, capabilities will be bringing some of their clients to the farm to perform tasks this year, which will both initiate healthy exercise and a feeling of accomplishment. During the summer months, an outdoor yoga class is held each Saturday morning with participants from all over town, and every year, there are multiple opportunities for Barnstable students, the Boy Scouts, and seniors to participate in. In closing, I want to thank you for your time and hope that you can see, as I do, that reissuing the RFP contract is a win-win, both for the Town of Barnstable and for the farm. Can I leave this with you?
Sure.
Is that okay?
Give it to the clerk, please. Give it to Ian Quirk.
My name is Norman Weil. I'm a Kootenai resident, and I'm also an airport commissioner. I'm speaking on behalf of the entire Airport Commission management team and all the employees, expressing opposition to new business item 202507 resolve approving a letter requesting Mass. Development conduct a feasibility study on establishing a joint military and civilian airport at Joint Base Cape Cod. The study, when Governor Healy pushed it forward, was strictly for housing. The Commission agreed and voted on the following agenda item on March 19th, 2024. Approval of the Airport Commission support any entity of the federal, state, county, town level interested in conducting a regional transportation study. This is a vote for a complete all forms of transportation study to be conducted, not a vote on a study that relates to closing Cape Cod Gateway Airport. Can the Barnstable Town Council close the airport? Based on our research, neither an Airport Oversight Commission nor the town as airport sponsor can unilaterally close or relocate the airport. Only the federal government through the Department of Transportation can do it. Closure of the airport would first require the FAA to agree to release the airport from various federal obligations, and the airport is incurred by accepting federal resources through grants and programs. The Aeronautics Division of Mass. Stat would also have to agree to release those grant obligations. The Town of Barnstable, using taxpayers' dollars, would need to purchase the airport property from the federal government at federal fair market value. The interests of private parties that have leases with the airport, have made major investments in the properties that are at the airport or otherwise rely on the use of the airport in present location would have to be evaluated. Resolving such issues would be complicated and costly. Would the Town of Barnstable be responsible for paying back the $99 million of grant assurances? When an airport uses federal funds, the airport does so subject to federal grant assurances. The airport would require to reimburse the federal government for any real or personal property or improvements acquired with federal funds, which have a useful life that extends beyond the date of the closure of the airport, i.e. fair market value. Would the Town of Barnstable have to buy the land back from the government? Barnstable would be on the hook for a cost of 639 acres at fair market value. There is lost revenue if the town were to move.
Mr. Weil, would you wrap up your comments, please?
Pardon me?
Would you wrap your comments up, please?
Based, I will do it as quickly as I can here. The airport provides 1,724 jobs, $73 million in payroll, and $152 million of economic value. It's the center of economic activity, and we encourage you to consider our issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Joanne O'Connor from Centerville. I've recently been elected president of the Centerville Civic Association, and I'm absolutely honored to be working with seasoned veterans as well as newcomers. We're excited for 2025. Our next meeting is February 10th at 6:00 p.m. at the Centerville Public Library. We'll have guest speakers from the Barnstable Department of Public Works, who will discuss the South and North Faces of the Sure Project that is about to begin in earnest. So we're happy for that, and I'd like to thank Kelly Colopy, the Communication Managers for the DPW, for her assistance with that. We also have a fundraiser, excuse me, starting on February 1st and running until the end of the month. That's at the Barnstable Transfer Station Redemption Shed. We will have folks there collecting cans and bottles, and the proceeds from the fundraiser will benefit our newly revived Scholarship Fund for Centerville students. If any of you would like to volunteer to join us at the Redemption Shed, please contact me at president@centervillecivic@gmail.com. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm Wendy Beerworth from Marston's Mills. I'm an airport commissioner, speaking as an individual, excuse me, with the suggested alternate approach to Commissioner Ludke's letter. However, I have also been asked to read a letter from State Representative Kip Diggs to you first, if that's okay, from Kip Diggs to the Town Council regarding Cape Cod Gateway Airport. Dear President Tamish, Members of the Town Council and residents of the 2nd Barnstable District, the Cape Cod Gateway Airport is a vital asset to our region, supporting local connectivity, economic activity, and essential community services. It provides critical transportation options for residents, businesses, and visitors while helping to sustain Cape Cod's tourism and hospitality industries. The airport also plays a key role in facilitating emergency medical travel and other travel operations that benefit our community. While I understand the importance of exploring all options for the future of Barnstable, relocating the airport would present significant financial and logistical challenges, along with the potential disruptions to the services and benefits the airport presently provides. As these discussions progress, I believe it is critical to recognize the airport's value to the region and carefully weigh the costs and impacts of any proposed changes. I encourage the council and stakeholders to consider the broader role that Cape Cod Gateway Airport plays in supporting our community's needs and long-term sustainability. Thank you for your attention to this important matter. As always, I look forward to working with you, state agencies, and local stakeholders to ensure Barnstable remains an active participant in shaping a responsible and sustainable future for our region. For what I wanted to say, excuse me, I should have had some water before I came up here. I'd like to present and suggest an alternate approach to Commissioner Ludke's letter. I'm going to use the term HYA, H-Y-A, which is the call sign for Cape Cod Gateway Airport, which is a mouthful. Counselor Ludke's letter suggests moving the airport would benefit Coast and National Guard aviation missions, but shouldn't the town's citizens and 65 airport businesses employing over 1,700 people take higher priority? A feasibility study by Mass. Development might be appropriate at some point, but known deal breakers need to be addressed first. I suggest creating an ad hoc committee to study the closure's impact on the town and to include the airport's commission, management, and tenants.
Could you please wrap up your comments?
Oh, I don't get.
No, you can go ahead.
I'm speaking for two people.
Finish up if you can.
No, you have three minutes.
You have three minutes.
Okay. So Kip Diggs' letter counted into my minutes? Reading the letter.
Three minutes is total for, if you want to have somebody else come up to read.
He sent that letter to us.
We received that.
It was already in the record.
I was asked to send that, so, to read it to you. Well, there goes my testimony. Okay.
You have some time still, ma'am.
Just to sum up, all I can say is, there are things that you could do very easily as part of a preliminary study to get rid of the deal killers first, and then go on to what Counselor Ludke is recommending. But I need to say right now that to send this letter now wreaks havoc and uncertainty on the 65 business employees at HYA. We are currently conducting a search for a new airport manager, as Katie Service has sadly decided to move into the private sector. So the timing of Counselor Ludke's letter could not possibly be more importune to us. I hope you won't agree to sign it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to speak again in strong support of this resource known as the Cape Cod Gateway Airport. My name is Mark Honorato. I'm the Director of Aviation Operations for Boston MedFlight, and I last spoke to you all in August of 2024. For those of you who are not here, Boston MedFlight is a nonprofit critical care transport provider, serving the communities of eastern Massachusetts, the Cape, and the islands. In serving the Cape and the islands, we routinely use the services of the Cape Cod Gateway Airport for fuel, bad weather instrument approaches, and to transport patients in and out. I thought I'd like to give a recap as to what's transpired since I last spoke to you in August 2024. Since then, we have impacted the lives of 89 residents and visitors to the Cape Cod's and the island. On average, we land at Cape Cod Gateway Airport every other day, and we transport one of your neighbors. Additionally, we brought 20 patients to the Cape Cod Hospital for cardiac treatment, saving a tremendous amount of time, rather than going all the way to Boston, for those critically ill people who need the services of the Cape Cod Hospital. Additionally, the Gateway Airport is not just a helicopter resource. In virtually all weather conditions, our medical transport jet is available to land at the Gateway Airport to pick up or drop off patients. The concept of using the Coast Guard airfield to serve medical transport needs is not realistic for us, where time equals life. That 37-minute drive from the Cape Cod Hospital to the Joint Base Airport would be life endangering. The Cape community benefits greatly from the services provided by the Cape Cod Gateway Airport. In addition to being a transport hub for critically ill patients, Boston MedFlight recently participated in the airport's mass casualty exercise and the annual Aviation Career Fair, an event where we meet our future pilot and maintenance technicians. We support the continued operation of Cape Cod Gateway Airport, remaining in Barnstable. The lives of your neighbors depend on it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to address it tonight on what I think is a very important issue for you as councillors, as well as to the residents of the town. I'm here as follow-up to an email I sent to Attorney Tom LaRosa last week on Thursday, January 23rd, and copied to others, including all of you. A copy of that email has been provided to you tonight by Clerk Quirk. As quick background, the Massachusetts Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, or the EEA, recently announced proposed new regulations for the implementation of Article 97 of the Massachusetts Constitution and the disposition of public lands. As you recall from the vote taken by the council last year on the Article 97 easements over Craigville Beach, the first step of the disposition process was the requirement of a two-thirds approval vote by the Town Council before the request could be sent to the legislature for its consideration. In the new regulations proposed by the EEA, the requirement for an initial two-thirds vote by a municipality, or in our case, the Town Council, is missing, thus weakening the first line of defense in a municipality's control over the disposition of Article 97 properties within its borders. The only reference to a vote by a public entity or municipality in the proposed regulations is the requirement for an affirmative vote, not a two-thirds vote, by the public entity or municipality approving the alternatives analysis submitted by the proponent. Prior to the EEA comment deadline, I sent a letter expressing my concern regarding the omission of the initial two-thirds vote requirement by the municipality. A copy of that letter was included with my comments, sent to Town Manager Ellis and to Attorney Tom LaRosa. That letter is also included in what was handed out to you tonight. At the January 21st West Barnstable Civic Association meeting, I asked Town Manager Ellis during public comment if he was aware of the omission of the initial two-thirds vote requirement by the municipality, and what our town attorney, whom Mr. Ellis has previously described as an Article 97 expert, would be addressing this fact in the town's comments to the EEA. His answer to everyone in attendance was yes, emphatically yes, and that he would send me a copy of the town's response to the EEA. When I received the town's comments from Attorney LaRosa last Thursday, I was surprised and disappointed to see that Attorney LaRosa and the town did not include any comment whatsoever regarding the omission of a two-thirds vote requirement by a municipality. I immediately sent the email you have before you tonight to Attorney LaRosa, with copies to the town manager, the legal department, the full Town Council, and others, requesting an explanation of the town's position on the two-thirds vote requirement, and why Attorney LaRosa did not comment, his comments did not include a comment on the omission from the proposed regulations. I asked Attorney LaRosa to let me know if I might have misinterpreted something or missed something in either the proposed regulations or the town's response. However, I'll point out that if I misinterpreted or missed something.
Could you wrap up your comments, Mr. Schulte?
I was hardly alone. I have a copy of a comment letter that was sent to the EEA and signed by over 40 highly-regarded Massachusetts land trusts, conservation groups, and preservation organizations, who also raised the same concerns, as did I, regarding the missing requirement for a two-thirds vote by the local governing body, such as the city council, select board, or town meeting, as well as many other concerns they had over the EEA's proposed regulations. If you're interested in seeing that letter and the signatures, please let me know. I'd be happy to show them to you at the end of this meeting. It's now been a week since my email, and I've not received a response or even an acknowledgement to my email and questions. I'm here tonight to respectfully request a response, an explanation from Town Attorney LaRosa, who I see is not here this evening, and/or Town Manager Ellis to the questions asked in my email. If the response is that the legal department unintentionally missed the omission of a two-thirds voting requirement in the proposed regulations, then the legal department should acknowledge that fact and the public informed of the error. If the town attorney intentionally chose not to comment and failed to insist on the requirement of a two-thirds voting requirement by the Town Council, then I'm asking the town attorney to explain to the public tonight why he would agree to propose regulations that would in effect weaken the town's control over the disposition of Article 97 lands within its borders. Finally, at last week's West Barnstable Civic Association's meeting, another citizen specifically asked Town Manager Ellis if he would take advantage of his professional access to Secretary Tepper and her staff, and call her to directly, one, provide her with input on the inadequate notification and hearing process used by the EEA for the public comment on this matter, which was commented on by Attorney LaRosa, and, two, express concerns about the proposed regulations omissions of a requirement for a two-thirds vote. I respectfully request Town Manager Ellis to tell the public tonight whether he called out or reached out to Secretary Tepper, as was suggested and requested by a citizen, and what response he received, and if he did not, reach out to Secretary Tepper.
Can you finish up, please?
Can you please explain why? I look forward to hearing Attorney LaRosa or the legal department and Town Manager Ellis address these questions tonight. Thank you very much for listening, and I apologize for going over. very much for listening, and I apologize for going over the time limit.
Thank you.
I've already signed in. Good evening, council, your favorite John Julius, and I live right up the road in Hyannis. That's a real tough act to follow, and that gentleman right there deserves an answer. And I don't think anyone should leave this room tonight until he receives that answer. I came here tonight for a couple different reasons. Number one, I don't know who's come up with the absolute most idiotic idea to move the shelter, homeless shelter, up to 460 West Main Street, unless I'm missing something or misconstrued that that's the proposed new location. And if it is, nothing could be more idiotic than putting a homeless shelter at 460 West Main Street. The neighborhood, the business people down there, it just, it boggles my mind that somebody would propose something so idiotic to drag down businesses and the values of people's homes. So that's all I'll say on that. I've seen a lot, and you guys all know my stance on the overbuilding that's going on all over the Cape and specifically Barnstable, and most specifically in Hyannis. I see a couple articles recently in the Cape Cod Times, and I'm glad that at least one councillor here, Council Bloom, thank you very much, was quoted in the paper the other day, you know, about this proposal of they're building up over there on Wilkins, 320 units. Now they want to build another 272. That has a West Barnstable, or Barnstable Village, I should say, address. So you're going to put a new fire station on the backs of the taxpayers, and this builder wants to build four or five more buildings to the 200 or 300 units? I have some news for all of you. You guys run this town. Governor Healy, who in my opinion is another big idiot, doesn't run the town of Barnstable. You do. We do. You're supposed to run it for us. This business for this, oh, we need more affordable housing. No, we don't. I want to share something with you. Hopefully, I won't go over my time limit here. But I want to share something with you. The following towns have put on their ballots for voters to vote housing, and guess what? It was voted down in the following towns. I know it was Rentham, Weston, Needham. Then we have Hanson, Hopkinton, Foxborough, Marblehead, Marshfield, Middleton, Milton, Norwell, Raleigh, and Secor. Those are all the towns that so far had the ability for their local governments to put it on the ballot. I challenge all of you to put it on the ballot so we can have a building moratorium here. We cannot afford to be continuing this overbuilding, especially Hyannis. You know the water. You know we've got a water shortage, especially.
Wrap up your comments as quickly as possible.
And you know that the sewage treatment, now we're going over to town sewer. I have news for you. That's not the answer. And you guys, in the end, you can be the ones and have your legacy known as, you cared about Barnstable, because I stood in the same room in 1988, and that council back then, they implemented the Barnstable, I was here that night, they implemented a building moratorium. 1988, right here. That's what we need to start to focus on, is a building moratorium. Thank you so much for letting me speak, and most importantly, really, and I say this very sincerely, thank you for all of you and the time that you put in. I do know you guys are here week after week I'm not, but thanks for your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
How you doing, folks? Eric Schwab, Hyannis. Are you familiar with a program called Payment in Lou of Taxes Pilot? It's used up around Boston. When a municipality is overrun by nonprofit organizations, it is possible for a community to go to those organizations and ask them to make tax payments in lieu. So it's called a pilot program. So it seems to me that with all the nonprofit building that's going on and the difficulty we're having with our budgets, that maybe we need to ask Housing Assistance Corp. to come in and have a conversation about how they're going to help pay for all the growth that they're bringing to Hyannis. They're really starting to have a detrimental impact on our little village. Speaking of detrimental impacts, there's a shelter that's been proposed for West Main Street, which will destroy West Main Street. It's completely overwhelming, and we would like to talk about that. We would like to respectfully request a workshop to have Housing Assistance Corp. come in and explain to us their intentions, and we would like to counter their assertion that this is good for this village by bringing in business owners and residents who will be negatively impacted by the shelter. We want to talk about this. We've known about the shelter move since December, and there's been hardly a peep from anyone about it. So let's talk about it. What's going to happen? Does anyone support it? I've been walking down, up and down West Main Street. No one supports a shelter moving to what's already a congested area with four schools. You're going to put a shelter in the middle of an area that's known for its schools? I mean, you couldn't pick a worse location. The councillor from Precinct 12 said the other day that she didn't think that this would even go through Town Council. She expects it to go directly through site plan review, bypassing the public, bypassing the planning board. How can you put a shelter on West Main Street without going through planning? How can you put a shelter on West Main Street without going through the Town Council? It's unbelievable that you even think site plan review would be sufficient to allow a 50-bed shelter in the heart of our village. I really sincerely hope that you put something together so I can bring in some business owners, some residents, and we can talk about this. It's really quite unreasonable that we haven't had more of a discussion. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any further comment? Any Zoom comment? No, thank you. Okay, I will move to, I will close public comments. Excuse me. We have one letter, Councilor Vivek. Do you want me just to talk about it? It was addressed to you. Okay. We received an email from David Sampson regarding the airport, and he is opposed to the measure tonight. I won't read the entire email, but all councillors have been given a copy of this email. Okay, moving on. Council response to public comment. Anyone on my right? Anyone on my left? Councilor Vivek?
Just want to thank everybody for coming to speak during public comment. It always takes time, especially on a cold night in January, so just want to thank you for coming out. The, you know, the airport, and it's unfortunate that it kind of comes to this, where we have our own airport commissioners appointed by the Town Council that have to come and feel like they need to defend themselves. And it's not something that, you know, the approach isn't something that I would support. I think that you should be part of that conversation. You know, we have this, and I haven't had a chance to read it all, but, you know, we get this folder put in place of all the different comments, some of which I believe Commissioner Beowith was trying to get through in regard to these many points and questions that need to be answered about, you know, and you guys are boots on the ground, and you all are trying to make it happen, right? Each and every day, your task is to improve things at the airport. Coming out of COVID, a lot of smaller municipal airports like Gateway Airport were affected negatively in regards and impacted in regards to that growth opportunities, things of that nature. But you've come out of it marvelously and got new renewed energy with different airlines, such as American and JetBlue. And so, you know, and I respect the fact that this letter doesn't really talk about the closing of the airport, but it's definitely the canary in the coal mine, that it's, it doesn't say it in the letter, but it is, you know, and again, we're voting to put forward a, and there's more discussion to take place later, but just so that, you know, if you're not here at that point, you know, it's, we're voting to allow and encourage a study that even if we're not closing our airport, we're encouraging a possible competitor, which would be the detriment of our airport. So it's, to me, it's a bit foolish, but at the same time, I just want to recognize the fact that you are being heard. I appreciate all the hard work that went into the information here, and I appreciate your presence here at the meeting. So thank you for that, and thank you again for everybody else for showing up and bringing so many issues to the forefront of not only the citizens, but the councillors' minds. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone on my right? Vice President Clark?
Thank you very much, President Tamish. I'd like to thank Ms. Firth for coming to speak regarding the proposed RFP, going out, a request for proposals for the management of the Conant property located in my precinct in West Barnstable. And I have seen it's a vibrant feature and adds character to our village and serves more than West Barnstable, more than the town of Barnstable, but has had served the community in both a social way and economic way to bring attention to the resources that are now there at the Meeting House Farm. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone on the line? No? The councillor's up.
Thank you, President Tamish. Again, thank you all for coming tonight. A very interesting and broad variety of comments that we heard tonight. Obviously, there are various agenda items that we will be having a more fulsome discussion, so I appreciate the comments. Couple things are not later on on the agenda. I know there were a couple comments about the proposed relocation of the homeless shelter. As I have said at another meeting, that matter probably will not be coming before the Town Council in any official capacity. That's not to say it might not come to the Town Council in some other capacity, but I believe that whatever changes are being proposed at that location on West Main Street will be going through the normal request for a building permit, and if that triggers any other conversations or movements through other departments or planning processes that will occur at that time. It's very likely, though, that this facility will be covered by the Dover Amendment, which does provide for a lot of opportunities for organizations that provide services, either educational or religious, to be able to be located in our community. So, just so there's some clarification for my earlier comment. And I look forward to our robust debate on some of the other items in our agenda.
Thank you. Councilor Turkelson?
Thank you, President Tamish. I just want to thank the Airport Commission for coming out and personalizing their experiences, and also for the Med Flight. You know, those aren't things you think about unless you've had personal experience, so I appreciate that input. And I think that the conversation about the homeless shelter is probably a conversation that's good to keep having, because it isn't a part of our community that maybe we need to spend more time working towards and finding solutions that are not just that one building alone. And I hope that Mr. Schulte gets some answers to his questions, because I think that's important and dovetails with Ms. Connolly's comments. So thank you for coming out.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilor Crowe?
Thank you, President Tamish. A number of issues is right. Tonight, it's good to see a variety of things that people are concerned about. As for the homeless shelter, I understand the concerns of the people out there, and I think it should be, this should be adjudicated in public, so everybody knows what's happening, and it's fairly covered, both by the media and by town committees and boards. The other thing I'd like to talk about is Article 97, the issue that Mr. Schulte brought up. It seems like here we go again. We have a legal team here that is out to, is supposed to look out for our best interests, and here's another example of it's not being something as simple as changing the amount of votes it takes for a majority from two-thirds to a simple majority is something that this council, I think, made it clear, or it should have been clear to our staff, that that's something that's really concerning. We've had problems with the, in the past, with the same issues with, as far as other things dealing with offshore wind, that we've come on the, we just haven't been properly served, I don't believe, by our legal staff. So this is just another example, and I would ask the legal staff to be more proactive and be looking forward to what's coming down the road, and have their ducks in a row as far as looking out for our best interests. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Councilor Lutke?
Thank you, President Tamish. I'd like to make a few comments. I do echo the concerns of Mr. Schulte. I would like to hear if we do have an ability to respond to that this evening. I think it's an important issue. I think John Groh touched on it. We've had so many discussions over Article 97 relevant to the wind discussions. I think it's really important that we understand why we don't want the two-thirds. So I echo that. Also, as far as the homeless shelter, I understand that it will come before us, and it goes before our, you know, our regulatory boards and commissions, but I think we need to go a step further. I'm the liaison to the Human Services Committee, and, you know, this town doesn't have any human services department. We've kind of relegated that to most of the nonprofits, and I think there was a commenter that talked about that, too. We have a lot of nonprofits, and we've kind of let them take the lead. So it puts the town in a very disadvantaged position when things like this happen. It makes us only able to respond to say, well, we have to wait till that comes before us. And I don't think that's appropriate in this case. A homeless shelter is a very specific use, and I believe this homeless shelter is being run by the Catholic Services, and I think there's going to be a component of the Duffy Health Center in there. It's going into my precinct, right across some party freeze, and what I'm going to do is I'm going to go reach out to the Catholic Services. I don't think we have to sit and wait. I think we should lean forward on this to understand it. I've done some research of what Portland, Maine has done. Of course, Portland, Maine has a human services department, so they have an ability to get involved at a better level than we do. But with that aside, they have a wonderful committee they've done for their homeless shelter that involves a lot of stakeholders, and I think it's time for that. I think, like a lot of things in town, you know, people don't have the time, the energy, the effort. You know, the homeless shelter has been there, you know, forever. And now that we're looking at something, let's get a group together, and let's look at it so we can inform the decision, and it won't just be based on zoning. This is a use, and I think we need to understand what we're doing better. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Crowe?
One more thing I forgot to ask about. We have our town lawyer here today. Can you come up and explain exactly the reason why we didn't, as a, put in comments about the Article 97 changes in the amount of votes?
I don't think that's appropriate at this point. I think that would be a discussion offline.
Okay, fine. Thank you. I think there was a question in the public for the same reason.
I will respond to that. Okay, any further public comment discussion? Town manager communications. For those that are not familiar, the town manager records his town manager communications, and it's available online. It's shown prior to the Town Council meeting, and the printed version is also available in it. This week, he discussed the budget calendar update, also discussed the possible temporary pause of all federal grants that has since been rescinded, at least for now, announced that the town's proceeding with a short-term license. Announced that the town's proceeding with a short-term license for the town-owned parking lot 30 Ocean Street in Hyannis. As discussed, they submitted a response to the EEA on the draft regulations on the public law, excuse me, Public Lands Preservation Act. The report from the MIT Renewable Energy Facility Clinic regarding their fall semester report is online. And the town of Barnstable recently hosted the Cape Cod Association of Public Procurement Offices for their monthly meeting. The Inspector General, Jeffrey Shapiro, was in attendance. He has a report on that. And then, as often happens, an update on the Water Resource Management Planning, including the Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan. There's a tremendous amount of information in his report, and I would encourage you all to read it. Okay, communication from elected officials, boards, committees, staff, commission reports, correspondence, and announcements.
President, may we ask questions of our town manager regarding his report?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
Sure. Mr. Els is available.
I would like to start. Thank you. Good evening, Mark. Town Manager Els.
Good evening.
I have about three or four items, and I'll try to get through them very quickly. Most of them are comments, some are questions. I'd like to start out with kudos to our procurement staff. We have a lot of procurement activities, especially with our Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan, and to get those out the door and to get those awards, those contracts awarded, it's a huge task, and I would imagine for the size of our town, we, our procurement activity is very active at this point in time. So, please commend our staff for the great work that they're doing. Just wanted to make a quick comment regarding the comments that we've made regarding the Article 97. I'm not going to ask anything specific in terms of what was included in that. I thought it was a very well-put-together comment letter, and if there's a grievance about something that's been omitted, I would let my other fellow councilors attend to that. But I did want to let you know that in the meet, well, actually, you were there, the meeting that we had at Mass Municipal Association, it appeared that our Lieutenant Governor was not aware that these regulations were being drafted, and if, she needs extra attention on, I think, making sure she gets, you know, our comment letter directly would be a great idea. At least, that's how I, what I understood her comments to be. It appears that the number two has been rescinded. We were in a point where we were concerned about federal grant assistance being frozen, but that was a quick turnaround of, oops, we're not doing that just yet, but stay tuned. But I did want to lead into my one question of, has there been any changes as a result of our new federal administration regarding our schools, law enforcement? Are we sensing any policy changes at the federal level that might have a direct impact on our local community?
Good evening, Mark Els, Town Manager. I don't know, President Tamish, how wide you want me to broaden answers to the many areas that both Councilor Schnapp, other councilors, and the public have asked this evening, but certainly, thank you for the comments on our procurement office. You know, I summarized in my town manager communications the role, the independent roles that they play, and it was, it was nice to have the Inspector General recognize Barnstable. And I recognized Amber because she plays a key role in this, but it really is our entire staff that does an outstanding job relevant to being transparent in the use of public funds and assets, and has long been recognized for that role in Massachusetts. So, it was just great to meet them. You usually don't have them down here. Certainly wants to come back and visit. Relevant to the Article 97 issues, the short answer is, after hearing the Lieutenant Governor say that, I sent it to her Chief of Staff, made myself available to her, and also asked for her support in continuing to meet, to answer another question, with the Secretary of Environmental, or Energy and Environmental Affairs. She, Secretary Tepper, put together a group of her subordinates in that office, including her Chief of Staff, her public, I think it's a deputy to public interaction on her staff, the Commissioner of the Department of Environmental Protection, a member of the Energy Facility Siting Board, and the head of Coastal Zone Management. And I've met with them on other issues related to offshore wind primarily. So, I also sent our comment letter and a request to meet with them, this group collectively, which, again, the Secretary of Energy and Environmental Affairs has asked me to meet with. And I've done, so I've done Lieutenant Governor and the Secretary, and I've asked for meetings, and I've made us available to continue comment. Relevant to the comments made at West Barnstable, I absolutely said to the group there that we would include comments on the two-thirds vote of the legislature relevant to what is being proposed as a change. I'll ask Karen Nobur to come up when I'm done, if the President agrees, to explain what that letter said, and actually, what that proposed change included, and how that relates to a local vote relevant to Article 97. Relevant to many of the orders, executive orders that have come out, and other actions of our new administration, we're keeping a very close eye on this. Our meetings have been focused on the initial announcement relevant to federal funding, which, though it has been paused, has thrown a red flag to all of us, especially in the area of schools, law enforcement, little bit more remotely, but certainly on our radar, the monies that come into communities across the country, certainly ours, relevant to environmental issues for the SRF, the seed monies, for us to be able to leverage loans, us being Massachusetts. Here in Barnstable, we certainly take advantage of that. We're trying to understand how this may or may not impact that. I know that Director Milne is readily attending all events, all communications, webinars, whatever available. I think there's another one, maybe even tomorrow, where they're going to try to explain what it is that they're not doing right now, but they might do. More broadly, we're looking at immigration as well, a major issue. I know our attorney has reached out to the Attorney General, and in general, attorneys across Massachusetts on this matter. I've reached out to the MMA, and there's actually, and I forwarded to our attorney and our Assistant Town Manager, you know, a meeting that'll occur, I believe, tomorrow, relevant to what's occurring with ICE, what role do cities and towns across Massachusetts have in this. Those are two areas. We're watching everything, anything that we believe could have impact relevant to Barnstable. We will continue to try to gain as much knowledge as we can, but many times, we read it in the newspaper before we're formally alerted by anybody relevant to this. So, I think I addressed the issues that you brought forward?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Karen Nobur, do you want to come up to address that? Town Attorney, Karen Nobur, thank you.
Good evening, councilors. Karen Nobur, Town Attorney. So, with respect to the two-thirds vote, EEA's regs are supposed to implement the law that the legislature passed. They're not supposed to make new law. The legislature could have instituted a two-thirds vote requirement for the Town Council. It didn't. And under state law, home rule petitions, which is what an Article 97 petition is, is a majority vote, and that is actually a good thing for the town. A majority vote provides more flexibility to the town for Article 97 petitions, and 99.9% of Article 97 petitions have nothing to do with wind. They are usually something where the town is the proponent, and the town is trying to get a project or get something done. So, the town is looking for Article 97 authorization from the state, and having a two-thirds vote is an unnecessary hurdle. It's something that EEA made up, essentially made up on its own in its internal policy, its land use policy, because it, I guess, EEA felt there was a vacuum because there was no law implementing Article 97. So, they created their policy, which I understand they're now reviewing, and they created a two-thirds vote and said, if you don't follow our policy, then you won't get any grants from us. And that's the stick that they had, because otherwise, they didn't really have any other authority to implement that vote, so, to implement that requirement. But I think it's important to keep in mind that the town is usually the proponent, it usually has nothing to do with wind, and you wouldn't want a two-thirds vote. A majority vote is better for the town and is, would be, and a two-thirds vote is an impediment. So, we did not, it was not an oversight. We talked about it, and we thought it was great that it was not in there. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comment?
I have one other unrelated question. Town Manager Els, I have one other question, and it has to do with the, what was in the Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan presented by Kelly. Glad to have her back. It was a great review of what's been going on with all our wastewater and water resource projects. But what caught my eye is the progress we're doing with the Centerville phase and Mother's Park in particular, which leads me to think that the house that we purchased in Centerville might be ready for some type of disposition at some point. And in a conversation I had recently with Councilor Lutke, and this is, was her suggestion, perhaps intergovernmental transfer of that property to the Housing Authority might be an option, because, you know, we've been talking about housing, and so I just wanted to plant that seed, that we, you know, you know, not hold that in inventory if we no longer need it for our wastewater, we need it for housing, and maybe that's a way to get it back into the, out, back into the community. So, thank you.
Mark Els, Town Manager. Before disposition can occur, certainly, we would come before Town Council to request that. We did say, once that project commenced, that we would bring that discussion forward, and so I'll discuss with President Tamish when the appropriate time would be, and also kind of the scope of what that discussion would be. In the past, it had just been to dispose of it, but this obviously would be a broader discussion, which we're more than happy to have. Thank you. Thank you. Any further questions? Okay. One thing I did fail to mention in the town manager report is the Comprehensive Financial Advisory Committee issued a report, an analysis of the Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan Funding Model. So, if you're interested in funding of the wastewater plan, very comprehensive look at that, and we'll actually be having a workshop on funding for the plan on February 6th, I'm pretty sure the date was. Okay. And I'd like to recognize Ann Quirk had some comments to make regarding Freedom of Information Act requests.
Good evening, councilors. I did a little survey of the Cape and Islands Town Clerks to find out how many public records requests they get, just to kind of feel where we stand with the rest of the Cape. And the, probably the towns that are closest to us in size would be Falmouth. Falmouth hasn't even had 200 in a year. We're sitting at 718 for last year. And I can just tell you that the amount of time and effort it takes to handle all of these public records requests is enormous. We have to give the first two hours for free because we are a city, form of government, and we are over a certain population. So, the first two hours are done just by our staffs, and it is a lot of work, and it's not the only thing we get. So, we have that program that's called FOIA Direct that's on the website, so people can go through that program, and we prefer it because then I can track everything. It all comes back to me. So, I keep an eye on the number of days and check with the other departments if they have any problem finding the information, and it's just, it's cumbersome. So, recently, we looked at, it's not just what comes across in that program. If someone walks into the Town Hall and comes into the Town Clerk's office and says, I need this information, it's a public records request. And we take it, and we try to do it as quickly as possible, but we have the 10 business days to get it done. A lot of people don't understand that we do have 10 business days to provide the information. We also get it on phone calls, and we also get it in emails. So, you add all of that on top of what we're already doing. It's an enormous amount of work. So, it's just something that should be pointed out because it's, it's not just me, it's all, it's all the other departments, too, and especially with legal, they end up with a lot of it, too. So, I think it's something you need to be aware of.
Thank you, and thank you to your staff for the work that they do do on it. Okay. Town manager review for 2024. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, we skipped the minutes, didn't we? Okay, my apologies. Okay, could I have a motion to accept the minutes of January 9th? You've all been provided a copy. Everything has to be a roll call vote tonight, as we have. Zoom.
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Motion seconded. Madam Clerk.
Counselors, Bloom.
Yes.
Burdick.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Leveque.
Yes.
Lutke.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Neary, oh, I'm sorry. Penn.
Yes.
Schnapp.
Yes.
Starr. He's checking his, yes.
Raising his hand.
Tamish.
Yes.
Turkelson.
Yes.
Passes.
Thank you. Councilor Lutke, I apologize. I see you have your hand up now. Is there a question you had?
Yes, thank you. I did have my hand up because I was quite startled by what Ann Quirk said, and, you know, Ann has been there for quite a while, and I, you know, I don't want to get into too much detail, but Ann, how does this number, that 700, compare to previous years? Do you have any trend data, or was this something you just looked into lately? I'm just wondering about trend data. I don't maybe need it right now, but it'd be interesting to see that because I think that's alarming, and I wonder what the rationale, is it how we're running the town, I mean, other town, I, you know, it just, it really makes me think we need to dive into this because it's taking an enormous amount of your time, and it shouldn't be if, I don't know, I'm really disturbed by that number. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Lutke. Yes, I do have information for you. The changes in the public records requests started in 2016, and by 2017, we had the FOIA Direct program, and that was, the state told us, we really should have that to keep track of everything. The first year, we had 114 public records requests in 2017, and it has been growing ever since. One year, we had like up to 300. Now, it's, as I said, 718 for last year. It's just, it's gone crazy. And again, it's not like... And again, it's not like if someone sends a request and we get a lot of them around election times, they don't come through that program. They come directly to us. They want voter lists. They want to know who voted which way, things like that. Those things take time, too, but they're not even in that.
Thank you.
You're saying the voting, the voting stuff is not in that number, Ann?
They don't have to go through FOIA Direct in order to ask for it. And many times, because, because we have a voting mailbox, a lot of them will come just through that voting mailbox directly to me.
Okay, thank you. I won't belabor it now, but it's, again, very startling to me. Thank you.
Councilor Mendez.
Thank you, President Tamish. Town Clerk, is that number you gave up to date? Or was that for all of last year?
That was for 2024.
Do you have a number for up to date?
I don't have it with me, but it's, it's crazy. It's really growing fast.
700, 762?
718 last year.
718. So that's 1,436 working hours. That's about nine months.
When you.
One individual's job. So we're basically paying somebody whatever they're making in your office for the year just to handle those requests.
And again, it's not just me. It's other departments, too. I'm not taking, but it just, because I'm considered the REO, super REO person, it all comes to me, as well as the department that it belongs to. But it's, I have to watch it. I do have to watch it to make sure we're doing things in the time limit that we have.
Okay. Councilor Turkelson.
Thank you, President Tamish. Town Clerk, the minimum they get for free is two hours. And over that, we're sending them a bill for the time spent.
When we get an extensive request, which happens quite often, we will send them an estimate ahead of time. There have been, for instance, during the election in 2020, we were getting an enormous amount of requests for how people voted for year after year after year after year. And once you sit down and start doing that kind of stuff, it takes time. So we would send out a good faith estimate to the person who was requesting it and say, "One of the groups, they were bombarding us as Town Clerks." It was, it was an effort by a lot of different people to bombard us. And once they saw the amount of money that was going to take, it's $25 an hour for the lowest paid person in the office, so to speak, to do the work, which not everyone can do. You send them a bill for $275. Then all of a sudden, they rethink, and they come back, "Well, let's, let's tone it down. Let's make it a little bit less. Let's do this, let's do that." We don't have to start anything until we, if it's that extensive. We stop the clock. We send them a bill. And then we continue once they pay for it.
And how often are we sending out bills of the 718 from last year?
I can only account for mine, but I also can account for a couple of other departments that do send them out regularly. So certain things require a payment, whether or not there's two hours involved or not. If you want a vital record, it's $10. It's, you know, that's what we have to, we have to have. The Building Department has a fee that people are trying to go around that fee, and they'll, they'll ask for the information. And it's $75. It's a fee that's on our website. So they'll send them, they'll put it on hold and send them a note saying, "This is what you have to pay first, and then we'll take care of it." So we do do that. It's just, we probably should do it more, but we do do it.
Councilor Crowe.
Ann, thank you for all the work you do. You're one of the most busiest people, just by looking at you and what goes on in your office that we have. So this is a huge thing. I got a question. Can people call up and say, "I want to see how Joe Blow voted in this election?"
Yes, they can. That's public record.
Okay.
Fact that they voted.
Now, let me just say, that just says they voted.
Oh, okay, that's.
Okay, they voted. So if you took a primary ballot, then they'll, then yes, it'll be either Republican or Democrat or Libertarian ballot.
Oh, but they, that's fine. They can't say how exactly they voted.
Yeah, there would be no way to do that.
I thought that was sort of interesting. Maybe the council should look into the majority or where these are coming from and what the reasons for asking are. I think it'd be something that would be good for us as a council to get a handle on this and get an idea of what the public is, is thinking on behind doing all this. And it's been explosive, obviously, from 2016, so it'll be nice to see.
Okay.
We probably can't see that, yeah.
You actually can't ask people why they want to know what they want to know. So that's not something that we're allowed to ask. So people make their requests for whatever reasons they have, but we're not allowed to say, "Well, why do you want that?"
No, we're not, I'm not saying ask people why they want it. Just, just get an idea of what, what sort of issues people are concerned about and get an aggregate of those so we can actually start thinking about it as a council. What does this mean? And why, why the, why the explosive growth in these kinds of FOIA requests?
Recently, recently, we've had requests for petitions that have come before the Town Council. And those petitions going back to 2008. So that's all on paper. So that requires a lot of time in and out of the files, finding these things, making copies, scanning them. And then they want, then it will come back and, "Well, now I want the agendas, and I want the meeting minutes, and I want the video." I don't have videos back to 2008. I don't know if IT even has them anymore. It's, you know, these are the, these are the kinds of things that take so much time. That's just a, for instance.
If I may, for the record, can you please define what REO means? Thank you.
Records Access Officer. Sorry.
Thank you. Further questions? Seeing none. Okay. I'm going to move on to the Town Manager Review. I'm sorry. Oh, God. I got the wrong, all right. I think I have the wrong, wrong agenda here. Right day, but it's been modified. Okay. I recognize Karen Nobur regarding delegation of an open meeting law complaint.
Thank you, President Tamish. Did you want to ask someone to read it in?
Certainly.
Thank you very much. The proposed vote is to delegate to the Town Attorney responsibility for responding to the open meeting law complaint submitted by Maria and Greg Gertie to the Town Council President and Town Clerk on January 27, 2025.
Second.
Okay.
Thank you, President Tamish. Karen Nobur, Town Attorney. So we just recently received another open meeting law complaint from the Gerties, and this vote would delegate to me responsibility for responding on behalf of the council. So that's what I'm asking you to vote. Thank you.
Okay. Any discussion on the part of the council? On my left, no. On line, no. Madam Clerk.
Councilors, Burdick.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Crowe.
No.
Levesque.
Yes.
Lutke.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Penn.
Yes.
Schnep.
Yes.
Starr.
He has to, he has to say something, Ann. What? He has to speak. It's a roll call.
Okay. Councilor Starr, I need to hear your yes. Is he having a problem?
You sign it?
Why? All right.
Can you write it, sign? It's a roll call.
Let's help the guy. You know, he's having trouble here.
Okay. Tamish.
Yes.
Turkelson.
Yes.
Bloom.
Yes.
That passes.
Thank you, councilors.
Thank you. Okay. Now. Councilor Lutke, you have a question?
Yes, I was wondering, could Gordon be allowed to just hold up a three-by-five card that says the word "yes" or "no" on it? I mean, could he just do that for the clarity purposes?
We can try that. Councilor Starr, if you could write out, perhaps on a piece of paper, either yes or no, and hold that up for us so that we're clear on what your intention is on the vote. Okay. So for the next vote. Hey, can't read it. All right. We'll give you a few minutes till the next vote, okay? Okay. In December of every year, the Town Council is required to do an evaluation of the Town Manager. The evaluation form was distributed to all 13 councilors. Eleven of them were returned. As a result of the evaluation that were submitted, the Town Manager received a 4.1 out of a possible five points on his evaluation. The individual evaluations are not public information because they're considered personnel records, but the summary of the evaluation is considered a public document. So if any of the councilors had any questions on that or the councilors wanted to see the individual evaluations, they are available in the council office for their viewing in the office. All right. Any questions on that? No? Okay. Thank you. Okay. Moving on to the orders of the day. Old business. Councilor Burdick, if you could read in 2025-065?
Sure thing, thank you. This is an item of old business for public hearing, the roll call majority of the full council. Item 2025-065. Appropriation order in the amount of $164,000 in Community Preservation Act funds for the purpose of conservation, preservation, and restoration of gravestones in the Universalist Cemetery located at 320 Main Street, Hyannis, as shown on Assessors Map 327, Parcel 074.
Second.
Have a second? Okay. Mr. Lee, are you presenting?
Yes.
I recognize Tom Lee from the CPC.
For the record, my name is Tom Lee. I'm the vice chair from CPC. This evening, we have also Pam Brown from the Federal Church here with me as well. But let me read through the rationale for you first. On October 21st, 2024, Community Preservation Committee meeting, the six committee members present voted unanimously to recommend it to the Town Council through the Town Managers, the Federal Church of Hyannis applications for $164,000 in Community Preservation Act historical preservation funds for the final phase to conserve, protect, and preserve the historical resource of 270 gravestones located in the Universalist Cemetery, 320 Main Street, Hyannis, as shown on Assessors Maps 327, Parcel 074. The gravestone in need of restoration was identified in the 2024 condition assessments that was funded through a previous Historical Preservation Committee Preservation Funds grant in 2017. The Federal Church owned the land where the cemetery lies and provided meeting space for several nonprofit groups. The Universalist Cemetery is the historical burial ground of sea captains and early residents of Hyannis dated to 1830, and is listed on the State Register of the Historical Places with an existing preservation restriction record. The Church will donate $1,000 with in-kind donations from volunteers providing ongoing research and management. I just want to read the financial impact so you understand what the financial means, the financial implication means. The current balance in the reserves set aside for the historical preservation is $1,195,212. This appropriation has no impact on the general funds since the entire amount is appropriated and transferred from this community preservation funds. And.
Thank you. Technically, this is a public hearing, which I failed to open. So if I could have a motion to open the public hearing? Some of. And a second. And Madam Clerk, do you have to have a roll call to open the public hearing?
Councilors, Clark.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Levesque.
Yes.
Lutke.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Penn.
Yes.
Schnep.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes, can you hear me?
Oh, yes. Tamish.
Yes.
Turkelson.
Yes.
Bloom.
Yes.
Burdick.
Yes.
It passes.
Thank you. So we are in a public hearing.
So.
Further, further presentation?
Pam wants to do some presentation.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Good evening. Thank you, President Tamish, Vice President Clark. Counselors and staff, my name is Pam Brown. I'm a member of the Federated Church, and I live right here in Hyannis. There are a couple of church members in the back tonight, as well as a volunteer who has contributed many hours to this project doing research and assisting the conservators with their field work for the condition assessment. His name is Bill Donley. I've been working on this project for about nine years now, and this grant will allow for its completion in the next year to year and a half. The cemetery will be 200 years old in 2030. You're looking at the view of the cemetery from Elm Avenue. Elm runs parallel to Main Street, one block north, connecting Barnstable Road and Center Street. The first church on the property was the Universalist Church, hence the name. The Universalists had split from the Baptists down the street and built their own church on the site in 1830. Then in 1917, they joined with the Congregationalists at the east end of Main Street to form the Federated Church of Hyannis. The cemetery is set back about 50 feet from Elm Avenue, so it's a bit hidden from view. Its western border is defined by a fence that runs behind the businesses along Barnstable Road. The church buildings form the western and southern, the southern and eastern borders. I don't think anyone could ever imagine, given its location, what transpired here in the early morning of October 30th. Our sexton arrived to work and discovered a crashed vehicle in the cemetery. He called the Barnstable Police Department. The vehicle had driven through the parking lot of Horgan Insurance and crashed through our fence, knocking over two gravestones. And the vehicle was then abandoned. It had been reported stolen the night before, and state police were involved, but apparently had lost sight of the vehicle and gave up the chase. A tall granite obelisk was knocked off its base and landed 25 feet away, near where the car stopped. the car stopped. The base is seen here in front of some of the damaged fencing. Fortunately, our insurance claim with the auto insurer provided funding for the repairs to the gravestones, the fencing and the landscaping. We were able to engage the services of Atlas Preservation to fix the stones during some warm weather days before the holidays. This granite monument weighs about 1,000 pounds and had to be moved and reset on its base. It marks the burial of Captain Joseph Linell, who lived from 1820 to 1903. This shows the before and after conservation work. The conservator brought in a tripod with cables to move the stone, the 25 feet across the ground, and then lift it onto its base. This small marble stone was also knocked off its base and is now back in place. It marks the grave of a young girl, Bessie Baxter, who died in 1875 at age 12, daughter of Captain Benjamin D. and Helen M. Baxter. This slide shows the conservator treating the surfaces in order to rejoin the monument to its base. Although the crash was a very unfortunate event, it gave us the opportunity to conduct a pilot project where we could observe the excellent work of this conservator. This slide and the next are representative of the poor condition of stones throughout this one-acre burial ground. Many are fallen, some were sunken, and excavated during the condition assessment. In the words of the conservator, this proposed work promises to transform the site from neglected to a well-preserved local historical landmark within a period of one to two years. This is the proposal summary from Atlas Preservation, Incorporated, Jonathan Appel, president, out of Southington, Connecticut. He is offering a firm fixed price, whoops, yeah, of $165,000, which includes conservation of the 270 stones, a timeframe of spring 2025 to fall 2025, possibly going into spring 2026, billing of $41,250 after each 25% of the work is completed. Plus, he has offered some extras. All stones will be cleaned. We have a total of more than 350 stones. Also, the creation and installation of 16 carved marker posts, one-foot-tall square stones, to define the four sections of the cemetery, which were laid out during the condition assessment. He's guaranteed no extra fees of any kind, even though some additional costs were mentioned in the condition assessment, like supplies of sand and peystone or lifting equipment to be brought in. Also, no inflation factor was included, but this is his guaranteed price. This is an example of the current temporary section markers that we had up that have not held up. The permanent square stone marker posts will enable visitors to find gravestones more easily. This is the detailed budget by fiscal year. There's no upfront deposit required. The church will contribute $1,000 toward the first billing. The project is expected to be completed in fiscal year 2025, but could spill over into fiscal year 2026, depending on things like weather conditions. The conservator will provide written quarterly progress reports. A word about the conservator, Jonathan Appel. In 2016, at the start of the project, I phoned Dan St. Pierre, who was the town of Barnstable Cemetery foreman, to ask how the town gets repairs done in their 14 cemeteries. He told me that Jonathan Appel had come from Connecticut to lead workshops and conservation methods for the crew here. Jonathan has been conserving stones for over 25 years and now conducts a 48-state tour every summer to teach others. He demonstrates work in one cemetery in each state. This photo was at the gate of a Colorado cemetery last summer. He was not interested in bidding on our condition assessment back in 2016, but this project of conserving the stones captured his attention, and he is very enthusiastic. I feel very fortunate that he can be available for us, and I'm confident that he will do an amazing job. And just a bit of history, this is the oldest stone in the cemetery and needs no conservation. The inscription reads, "In memory of Caroline, daughter of Lemuel B. and Temperance Simmons, died July 10, 1826, age 1 year 6 months and 20 days." It is a slate stone carved by Nathaniel Holmes, the first resident gravestone carver on Cape Cod, with a willow motif symbolizing mourning and sorrow. He carved about 25 stones in the cemetery. His home still stands on Route 6A in Barnstable Village. Lemuel Simmons was a sea captain, and the Simmons Homestead, built in 1820, still stands on Scudder Avenue near the junction of Pitcher's Way, home of the Told Hall Classic Sports Car Collection, all red cars. Although Caroline died in 1826, we believe that the stone was placed in 1830 when the church was built. And last slide, our first cemetery tour was offered to church members last September, followed by another opened to the community in October. The goal is to offer more guided and self-guided tours to the public and to make this an inviting site to visit and stroll the grounds. Thank you, and any questions?
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Brown? Counselor Schnapp?
Thank you, President Tamish, and thank you for the presentation this evening. You might have just answered my question in that, will the cemetery be open to the public at all hours, or is it limited to just daytime hours, or?
It is required to be open to the public now even. During the daytime, 8:00 AM till sunset, or it's different hours during the summer to close. But we've been locking the gate sometimes at night, not every night. We have to have someone lock and unlock it, but it's open every day for visitors, and people do, once in a while, come.
Well, it seems like a great asset for our village of Hyannis and the town of Barnstable, so I am very much in support of this effort. Just curious, and this might not actually be a question to you, but usually in CPC worlds, you know, we don't pay for the entire project, and this, it feels a little funny that you have an invoice, and that got submitted, and the CPC awarded it all. So, I didn't know if there was any requirement in our CPC disbursement of funds for any bidding, or if we, I mean, it seems like this person, the company or the person that you have selected for the project is very uniquely qualified for it, but again, it's not really a question for you. It's, I just don't remember if CPC has any requirement for the work that's done. It obviously doesn't have to follow our procurement rules, but I didn't know if there's any requirements at all.
Well, I mean, we did have to get three bids. We did. And they're in the application.
Okay.
I hope it was sent out.
That answers my question. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Okay. Anyone else? Counselor Lutke?
Thank you. Pam, a magnificent presentation, and the Federated Church is an absolute jewel for Hyannis. And I'm glad that Tom Lee mentioned in his remarks about the nonprofits that use it. I've been to some incredible presentations in that church. They have such a variety of venues in there available, and they do a beautiful job, absolutely fantastic. And you've opened my eyes to the cemetery. I've never ventured in there, and now I want to. And I love that you're bringing a cemetery to life. I've certainly been to Arlington Cemetery in the DC area many times, and it's just almost magical to walk through there. It really is. And this could be our own magic in Hyannis. I really, really support this project, and I love that you're showcasing our seafaring heritage. I think oftentimes we lose sight of that, and it is, you know, a part of our heritage, and it's fantastic that you have that. My, I mean, I'm 100% in support of this. Great presentation by Tom and by you. My one question is, where would people park if they wanted to go on these tours? Where would they park? I'm not comfortable understanding where your parking is.
There is a small parking lot at the corner of Elm Avenue and Willow, which is where the, a baby center has been located. They are in the process of moving down the street, but there's that small parking lot. There's parking on Willow Avenue, and there's grass on the slide that I showed that was, that showed that we're 50 feet from Elm Avenue. There's a grassy area where people can park also.
Okay. And just curious, since you mentioned it, where's the baby center? The baby center's been there forever. Where are they going?
They're going down the street to what used to be the Colonial Candle Company, across from Bradford's Hardware.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. I'm totally in support of this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comment? Lutke, thank you. Could have a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote?
Counselors, Crowe?
Yes.
Leveque?
Yes.
Lutke?
Yes.
Thank you. Mendez?
Yes.
Penn?
Yes.
Schnapp?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Tamish?
Yes.
Turkelson?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you. Council discussion. Any further discussion by members of the council on this item? Am I right, seeing none? Am I left, seeing none? Online, seeing none? Okay. We have a, go to a vote, please.
Counselors? Leveque?
Yes.
Lutke?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Penn?
Yes.
Schnapp?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Tamish?
Yes.
Turkelson?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Passes unanimous.
Thank you. Counselor Bloom, could you read in 2025-066?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is item 2025-006. I had it on the wrong page. I had it on the discussion page. Sorry about that. This is an appropriation order in the amount of $50,000. Is this the one we're doing? Six-six? Yeah, okay. Community Preservation Act funds for the purpose of hiring a consultant to assist with updating the town of Barnstable's open space and recreation plan.
Second.
Second? Heard second? Okay. Madam Clerk, we have a motion to, excuse me, a motion to open the public hearing. We have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Madam Clerk.
Counselors? Leveque?
Yes.
Lutke?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Penn?
Yes.
Schnapp?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Tamish?
Yes.
Turkelson?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you. Mr. Lee?
Thank you. For the record, my name is Tom Lee. I'm the vice chair from the CPC. Carl with the planning and development is here with me as well. So, let me read through the rationale for you. At this, at the November 25th, 2024, Community Preservation Committee meeting, the five committee members present voted unanimously to recommend to the town council through the town manager approval of the planning and development department's applications for $50,000 in Community Preservation Open Space and Recreational Fund to hire a consultant to assist in the updating of the town of Barnstable's open space and recreational plan. The town is seeking a state land grant on the, in the amount of $20,000, and if the award, if awarded, it will reduce the Community Preservation Act funds needed for the projects. For the financial impacts, the current balance of the reserve set aside for the open space and recreational preservation is $919,963. This appropriation has no impact on the general funds since the entire amount is appropriated and transferred from the Community Preservation Fund. Carl is here in case you have any questions for these applications.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Pendecini? Seeing none on my right, my left, seeing none online. Counselor Turkelson?
Thank you, Vice President Tamish. How long will we expect that the work will take in order for the work to be completed?
Yeah, it's going to depend on how quickly we can turn around the RFP and get that going, because you can't put that out there until the funding's appropriated. We're hoping to have it by the end of, the project completed by the end of August or the end of September at the latest.
And how will this information dovetail with the information that the LCPC might need in their process?
Uh, that's a good question. We're hopeful that the LCPC process will wrap up before then, so, yeah, I'm not sure that it will really impact it.
Okay. Counselor Clark?
Actually, I have another question for Mr. Pendecini. How often does the open space and recreation plan get updated, or what's the timing of it?
Yeah, state law requires it to be updated every seven years, so our last one's 2018, so we're due this year in 2025.
Any further questions? Counselor Turkelson?
Thank you, President Tamish. Back in the last time we did this, do we do the same process where we used a consultant to do the plan? And do you expect, based on the information, where the town was then and where the town is now, that there'll be a major update, or is the information from that plan fairly comprehensive?
Yeah, that'll really be the first task, is to kind of review, review that plan with the consultant, see how much data needs to be updated. It's a pretty good starting point, so it doesn't need to be a full makeover, but we do anticipate some updates. A lot has changed since 2018, hence the need for a consultant to help us, you know, navigate all those changes.
Counselor Schnapp?
Thank you, Mr. President. Are there elements of public participation in the updating of this plan?
Absolutely, and we'll be engaging with a lot of boards, committees, and commissions that kind of touch the plan as well, so there'll be a lot of opportunity for public engagement.
Anyone else? Counselor Lutke?
Thank you. I'm just curious, in 2018, did we use a similar methodology? Have we, have we used this before, where we asked for CPC funding? Is this the normal way that we did this, or have we done it using a different process?
That predates my time with the town. I can get back to you on that answer, though. Jim says yes. Yes, okay, yes. I'm hearing from Mr. Cupfer, our director, that yes, that is the same process.
Okay, so this is the accepted process for getting this plan updated?
Yep.
Okay.
Any further questions? Seeing none? Thank you. I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Counselors? Lutke?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Penn?
Yes.
Schnapp?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Tamish?
Yes.
Turkelson?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Leveque?
Yes.
Okay. Passes. Any council discussion on this item? Seeing none, we'll go to a roll call vote.
Counselors? Mendez?
Yes.
Penn?
Yes.
Schnapp?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Tamish?
Yes.
Turkelson?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Leveque?
Yes.
Lutke?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your service today.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Counselor Turkelson, could you do 2025-067, please?
Thank you, President Tamish. Item 2025-067 is an item of old business that may be acted upon by majority vote. It is for the authorization of a contract with a term of up to 10 years for the management of the Conant Meeting House Farm property located in West Barnstable.
Second.
Second. Okay. Attorney Nobre, should we discuss that change at this point because of the, how it's read in or just amended?
No, I think you, you read, you read it in, right? Was it read in? Yeah, it was read in.
It was read in.
Yeah, so it's read in. And what I wanted to do was just briefly go through a proposed amendment to the language, and it'll be the same amendment to the next item as well. And when you're ready, you can, you can vote on the amendment. And I would say, let me just talk it through, and then Director Anthony can make his presentation, if that makes sense.
Should we open the public hearing first?
There is no public hearing.
I'm sorry. Okay.
Okay, so
You have the floor.
Thank you. Karen Ober, Town Attorney. So the way this vote and the next vote is written is that it's a management contract that you're being being asked to authorize an up to 10-year term for a management contract. Excuse me. That's actually inaccurate. It's really not a management contract. If we were engaging someone to provide management services, we would be paying them. In this case, they're paying us. So what this really is, is a long-term license for the use and occupation of the property. So and the reason it's structured this way is normally it would be a lease. We can't do a lease because it's Article 97 protected property in both of these agenda items. If you did a lease, you're conveying a property right that would require authorization from the legislature because that would be considered a disposition. So I think in the past, the legal department thought the way to structure this was through a management contract. I don't actually think that's accurate. I think it should be a long-term license, which does not convey a property right, which has certain protections built in. And normally, a license is short-term, and it's not subject to 30B. So in this case, if you're doing a long-term license, I would say we should still follow the 30B process so that all those protections are in place, and then we structure it as a license and not as a lease and not as a management contract. So when you're ready, I can go through what the proposed amendment would look like to just clean up the vote. But I can turn this over to Director Anthony, unless there are questions.
Okay. Okay, why don't we go through the rationale when we actually come up with the motion? We'll come back to you.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, counselors. My name is David Anthony, Director of Asset Management. These two key properties have come up in their cycle for RFP and new agreements. There was some question this more earlier today in a public comment on this property. Specifically, the intent is to put out an RFP. Typically, we will put one out for three years. But we are requesting, in the full attempt to comply with 30B, to make this long-term license as much in compliance with 30B as possible. The similar request that a contract beyond 36 months would require approval by this body. We're asking for permission, in essence, then, to offer in the RFP a 36-month contract up to 120-month contract and allow people to fall within that realm, depending on what their expertise would be during the proposal process. That would be fully vetted out. The Conant property itself, I've just included a few slides here in case people are not familiar with them. It's made up of three parcels. This is the Fred Conant Nursery that was in West Barnstable for decades. It was a fixture at this end of Meeting House Road down by the Rooster Church. Total of 22 acres spread between those three parcels. It still, to this day, contains one greenhouse, an attached barn, an independent barn, and then, of course, the Payne Black House, which dates back to the late 1700s, early 1800s. There's been extensive money through CPC to try to preserve that old structure. Again, this was acquired in 2000, and this is under the Cape Cod Land Bank Act, which is what put it under Article 97. The purposes of that, the rules associated with that particular purchase restrict the kinds of uses that can happen on this property rather severely. It is for conservation and passive recreation. We have worked with prior tenants there, the Meeting House Farm Group, formerly under the direction of now deceased Judy DeRozier, who cobbled together a community effort to really enhance this property, to preserve the different varieties of trees that were there. There were a lot of nature activities. There's a lot of opportunities for the public to enjoy this, and it is truly a town asset. One of the reasons for acquisition was to prevent this from being developed in a very sensitive part of town. It was to encourage the idea of community gardens and enhance trails in that area. And there are rare and endangered species that are there, as well as a wide variety of trees, as it was a nursery. It is located within the National Register Historic District. It is in Old Kings Highway. There is proven future public water well supplies there as well. So when we take all of those in, what we are looking to do is encourage a community activity that will be the least impactful to this property. We'll encourage people for educational uses or for recreational uses to come out and enjoy what's there. Of particular note, the rhododendrons, when they are in full bloom, are just spectacular. It is well worth the trip from wherever. So in the end, what we're asking today is a public endorsement of the idea of being able to offer up to a 10-year term under a long-term license agreement that would be issued as a result of a request for proposals that we would be putting out within the next 30 days. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Anthony? Counselor Schnep?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, David. A couple of questions. This is a wonderful property, and the stewardship of the Meeting House Farm Group has been tremendous in terms of what they've done to take care of it and also expand its uses. I do have two questions. One is very specific to the Payne Black House, which I don't know if it's been included in any previous management contract with the Meeting House Farm. And if they, if in fact that should be included because I don't know what type of use it is going to be had because it's currently vacant and I don't believe it's completed in terms of its restoration, which the town has put a lot of money in. And then the second question is, are we voting tonight to authorize going up to the 10 years? And then we'll see, it'll come back to us when it's, the process is done? Or are we just saying 10 years and staff will do the RFP process and negotiate the contract with the, I mean, the likely groups or individuals are probably the current.
Well, we will see. It is a public process, and we are obligated to be in compliance with 30B to try to go through and do this with blinders on and as publicly as possible so that if anybody had an idea and could come in, meet the goals of the RFP, they could submit a proposal which would be evaluated. To your second question first, the way we have typically done this in the 26 years that I've been here is that this, the authority to go beyond the 36 months is granted to the town manager. The town manager would then award the contract, which is typical of the authority that he would have on contracts. And we will come back, and we can inform you of what that decision is. That has been the most efficient way so that staff, through that RFP process, who would be chosen from very, very diverse areas of the town. Typically, you would have a DPW person. You might have someone from CPC. You might have someone from Conservation. So that you get staff input. They would evaluate any and all of the RFPs that come in and make a recommendation to the town manager, who would either accept or send us back to start again. And then information could be given as to the contract that was recommended. It tends not to be efficient to try to deliberate the value of an RFP in this particular setting because of the public nature of this. If there is a, if there is a real need for that kind of input, we could discuss whether or not there might be an option for that. But typically, it has been the transfer of the authority to the town manager to go beyond the 36 months, which is what is contained in the direction from the Inspector General's office and 30B. So as far as Payne Black goes, the Payne Black House is currently not finished. There have been several rounds of financial investment into that house to stabilize the shell of that house. The foundation, which was built on fieldstone and had actual tree trunks holding it up, had to be replaced. It was far more extensive than had originally been thought. That process needs another round to finish that before the flooring could support any kind of a use. We had entertained the idea of rolling the use of that house and that asset back into a future contract. And I think that we can do that and build that into any kind of a license agreement that we have moving forward. It's just at this point in time, it's not a usable asset, and we wouldn't encourage public access to it at this time until we finish that last phase.
So is it wise to include it in this license? I mean, because you said it's a separate parcel, so I'm questioning whether the eventual bidder or selection of the entity that's going to run this parcel, do they need the additional burden of the Payne Black House?
Well, the burden would not be presented to them until we were done with it. I think what we would do is build into any kind of an agreement with whoever the entity is that would come forward, that the potential exists once it is done to fold it back in. That has typically been what we have discussed in the past. But it is, we've been hard pressed to get that final funding in order to get this done. Someone who comes in, who has access to grant money or anything like that, might make that part of their proposal to help finish the building, in which case they would put an investment into our property. That's something that has happened before, but I have no notion of whether or not that's an opportunity that anyone would bring to the table at this point.
And last question, what would be the public asset access to this, these parcels, you know, now and in the future?
Well, we make it very clear that this is open space that is available to the public. An important part of the RFP is going to be presenting how they would embrace that idea that this property is available, not just to West Barnstable, but also to the entire town. There have been all sorts of activities that have embraced that in the past. Community gardens, not just to people from West Barnstable. We've seen all kinds of activities in the greenhouse. We've seen fundraising activities. I believe there was a time when fourth grade, fourth grade classes would come out and learn about nature as kind of a living classroom. There could be all kinds of activities like that, and the RFP will definitely be weighted towards those people who will embrace that idea of open and public. This was open and public land. It was purchased in that way, and that is really what the intent of this licensing agreement is, to embrace that.
Thank you, David.
Any further questions? Vice President Clark?
Thank you very much, President Tamish. And thank you very much for the comprehensive presentation, Director Anthony. I just want to not so much ask a question, but to state for the, for the record that the West Barnstable Fire District residents taxed themselves $350,000 towards this acquisition, along with, there were private donations that put the purchase over the, over the finish line back in year 2000. So just for the record, that was local investment, mostly because this property is up gradient of one of, of an identified municipal well for West Barnstable residents, although it's not functioning at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. My left?
I have a question for Karen.
Okay. All right. Thank you, David. Okay.
So I'm assuming the way that you reworded it is more specific to what is actually going to happen because right now, the item is we're authorizing a contract, and it's hard to do that as a council when you don't have the actual contract in front of you to approve. So I would hope we're Well, the point of, well, I am changing the word contract, but I'm not sure if it addresses what you're asking. What you're really authorizing is the up to a 10-year term. That, that's what Chapter 30B says you need council approval for when you go beyond three years. So that's really, you're not, you're not authorizing the award to any particular entity. You're authorizing an award of a long-term license, once we talk that through, for a term of up to 10 years. If it could be very specific that it, you know, we're delegating that authority to the town manager through, I mean, I think it, just, just so we know what we've actually done. But we can, I mean, we can add that into the amended. Exactly. That's, that's all I'm asking for because we've had other issues that have come before us where we've been asked to approve very complicated documents without a lot of ability to review it. And I don't think any of us on the dais want to be intricately involved in the RFP process or the, you know, review of them. But we, I want to just make sure that what we're agreeing to is exactly what we're agreeing to. Yeah, I mean, I think David Anthony would say under 30B, you don't need to actually make that delegation, but you certainly can. Okay. And so if you think that's clear, we can do that.
Typically, the delegation is implied or it's via 30B. Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, it would be the town manager. Yeah. Yeah, but I can, we can, there's no harm in saying it.
Okay. Okay, do you want to make your motion or amendment?
Let me, I'll read it, and then you all can make the motion. So the, if we change it, it would be a motion to, it would say, "In accordance with General Laws, Chapter 30B, Section 12B, the town council does hereby authorize and delegate to the town manager the award of a long-term license to use and occupy the Conant Meeting House Farm property," and then, as it reads, the rest.
Okay. Would someone care to?
I'll move that.
All right. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, we'll be voting on the amendment to the main motion. So roll call vote?
Counselors. Penn?
Yes.
Schnep?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Yes.
Tamish?
Yes.
Turkelson?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Leveque?
Yes.
Ludke?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
That passes.
Okay. Any further discussion on the motion as amended? Seeing none, we will be voting on the motion as amended? I'm sorry. Counselor Starr?
Thank you. I did have one question for, it seems like, my question for David Anthony is, it seems like a big change from what we've had before. I mean, you say that we're going to, we're going to save $30,000 a year. Is that because the DPW will no longer do any maintenance on this project?
Actually, the incumbent who had been contracted before there was, in essence, saving that kind of money for DPW because we were not having to do a lot of that work through their fundraising, through their volunteer activities. They would take care of an awful lot of that. They, they would contract with the Sheriff's Association to do work there. They worked with AmeriCorps to clear underbrush and expose some of the trees. So any entity that comes in and does that kind of work would, in essence, be a cost avoidance for the town of Barnstable's DPW.
So one other question. So who is paying the insurance now on the property?
So any town property falls under the insurance umbrella that we carry of our general liability. However, prior agreements have always transferred the first line of risk to the entity that is there, that they would carry the first layer of general liability associated with the actions of their entity. And then if an incident, for some reason, did splash back onto the town, then our insurance would likely respond.
Okay, thanks. So and one more question? So and, and one more question, thank you. What, what is the benefit of 10 years as compared to five years?
Typically, what winds up happening with a short-term contract is that it leans heavily towards the incumbent, who has an understanding of what can and can't be done, has an experience level there. Someone who has a new and creative idea needs at least a, a year to a year and a half to figure out what they're doing and then has a very short term at the end. And in my experience with 26 years procurement, when you get something like this, is it going to require a rolling investment of someone to come in, both in time and talent and material? A longer term may encourage other people with creative ideas to respond. It's to encourage more procurement.
Okay. That, thank you. I just, I think that 10 years is a long time. And we're authorizing 10 years, but let's not make that hard and fast.
If, if I, if I could, to that point, we typically do a five-year term with a renewal option of five years. And there is a obligatory analysis at the end of those five years as to how strong the tenant has been and whether or not market conditions have changed or whether or not there is more interest in the community. So typically, we will do a five-year with a five-year option to address exactly your concern, counselor.
Okay. Thank, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we will be voting on the motion as amended? Madam Clark.
Counselor Schnep.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Tamish.
Yes.
Turkelson.
Yes.
Bloom.
Yes.
Burdick.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Levek.
Yes.
Ludkey.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Penn.
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to 2025-068. Counselor Schnep, would you?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is an item of old business that may be acted upon by a majority vote. Item number 2025-068, Authorization of a Contract with a Term of Up to 10 Years for Fixed-Based Operator to Provide Management Oversight Services at Cape Cod Airfield in Marston's Mills.
Second.
All right. Mr. Anthony.
Good evening, counselors. David Anthony, Director of Asset Management. Similar to the Conant property, this property was purchased under that same Cape Cod Land Bank Act and has some of the same encumbrances of passive recreation that we saw before. The difference here is that it is a much larger parcel, 217 acres in total. The airfield itself is about 84 to 86 acres of that land. It is perhaps the most visible part. But a lot of people who go by think that it's just the airport and that's the Danforth property. But the Danforth property extends far to the north and to the west and connects to the conservation land. That's the darker green area up above. And it also connects to some open space property to the west. There's a number of components that make this property up, but specifically, this request is associated with just the airfield area of about 84 acres, which is in the southern corner, right at the roundabout at Route 149. There was actually a stone wall that says the William and Hilma Danforth Recreation Area, which was one of the conditions of the acquisition back when the town purchased it. Noted here, it was 2003, total acreage 217 acres, purchased under the Cape Cod Land Bank Act. It has a historic airfield. It has numerous trails. There's also a remote control model aircraft club that operates. There is also a way to water with a parking lot that extends down to Mystic Lake on the south side of Race Lane. Important here is that generally passive recreation is just kind of listed as passive recreation is defined in Mass. General Law. But in the deed itself, it specifically chose to call out the activities associated with the historic grass airfield that has celebrated, I believe it's 95 years in its existence. It has been a fixture there since the early days of aviation. So there's a number of different activities that are there. Specifically, you'll see private non-commercial flying, including glider, banner towing, airship expeditions, exhibitions, specifically excluding certain kinds of activities and any sport conducted in a stadium, gymnasium, or similar structure. Sometimes the language is, is kind of fun to piece through. The reason for this acquisition was there was a proposed subdivision for 360 private homes floated early into, in the 2000s. This was going to be a heavy burden on infrastructure there, which could not adequately manage that kind of density. The Barnstable Town Council purchased the property in 2003 and the airfield was closed in 2003, but then reopened in 2004. There are a couple of minor utility easements across the property. And then there's a deed provision concerning the windmill that is one of the three buildings associated with the airfield. In 2005, a land use feasibility study was done to try to anticipate the different activities that could and should happen there. Additionally, in 2007, there was another town council vote that further restricted certain types of activities there. There had been a push at that time for a potential another nine holes of golf to be added to Old Barney Golf Course. After an extensive study, it was determined that apart from a few of the heaviest weekends of the year, the golf courses were running at around 65% capacity. So it was more going to be directed towards weekend play. And at that time, the town council chose to further restrict and prohibit improvements in the non-aviation area, which meant all the rest of that particular property. In 2010, there was a inventory of plants and critical habitat that was there and recent investments by State Fish and Wildlife with some heavy-duty grant investment to preserve and expand the plant areas. There were three different endangered species of plants that were identified on that property, including one particular plant that hadn't been seen for almost 40 years in New England. And it seems to be thriving at that particular location. What that means is that we have an extra layer of involvement with the state. And the Fish and Wildlife restored some habitat, cleared about 16 acres of underbrush to encourage transitional habitat from the savanna plain into the wooded areas and cleared about two acres of scrub pine to encourage that one endangered plant to grow in that particular direction. That's my presentation on Danforth. Again, what I'm asking for here is permission, public permission, to be able to have an RFP that offers up to 10 years, again, taking into account Counselor Starr's suggestion, five years and five years with a renewal. In this case, we have the operation of a historic airfield, which involves a pretty heavy investment of time and personal money in order to make that go. We do expect to get a slightly better return than we would from a community group at Meeting House Farm. There is a, there's a heavy outlay in aviation liability insurance, which would be first and foremost. One of the reasons why this was set up with a fixed-base operator is so that they would assume any of the aviation liability that goes along with it and the town would not have to incur the costs associated with that. In return for that, a fixed-base operator, which is a defined term that carries with it a, a license to operate this kind of airfield issued by Department of Transportation from the state. That's a critical element that someone would have to come in and provide here. You can't just hire someone off the street to simply run an airfield. There are certain standards with the state that need to be run. So this is going to be a substantial lift for someone to come in and do this work. We've been very fortunate to have good partners in this over the past 15, 20 years. I fully anticipate that they will bid again. But with the open process, we need to encourage that kind of competition and a longer term would allow for a new person who had the appropriate licensure to come in and potentially take this on. That's why we're asking for the additional term.
Thank you. Any questions on my right? Question left? Any questions online? Counselor Boom.
Do the people who currently have the contract, do they have all the appropriate licenses?
Yes, sir, they do.
Great.
Attorney Nober.
When, are you ready for the proposed?
We're ready.
Okay, so again, it would be very similar to what you did before. As amended, it would read, "In accordance with General Laws, Chapter 30B, Section 12B, the Town Council does hereby authorize and delegate to the town manager the award of a long-term license for a fixed-base operator to use and occupy Cape Cod Airfield in Marston's Mills for a term of up to 10 years commencing on or about May 1, 2025."
Do I have a motion to accept the motion as read?
Second.
The amendment, excuse me, the amendment as read.
Second.
Okay. Madam Clark? Any discussion on the amendment? None.
Yes.
Counselor Starr.
Did you?
No.
He's talking.
Confused.
Madam Clark.
Counselors. Starr.
Yeah, yeah, yes, thank you.
Tamish.
Yes.
Turkelson. Bloom.
Yes.
Burdick.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Levek.
Yes.
Bet, Ludkey.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Penn.
Yes.
Schnep.
Yes.
It's unanimous.
So that was on the amendment to, it was on the amendment. Any discussion on the motion as amended? Seeing none, I hope. Madam Clark.
Counselors. Tamish.
Yes.
Turkelson.
Yes.
Bloom.
Yes.
Burdick.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Yes.
Crowe. Levek.
Yes.
Ludkey.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Penn.
Yes.
Schnep.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Anthony.
Thank you, David.
I think this would be an excellent time for a 10-minute adjournment. We are adjourned.
How much time is spent?
Yep, so they're looking historically at data. So they'll look at all the crash data information again and all the traffic counts that have been done in the area. But the observations, the actual boots on the ground where the departments come together with the traffic engineer and sit at the intersection, that's just a one-time snapshot. Where they'll, it's meant to act as more of a community engagement tool where we go to the location, we all gather and evaluate, and we all bring our known histories for the different intersections. So that's why it's important to have police, fire, and everyone else that has that expertise. So the audit itself is a one-time snapshot.
You know, I ask because I had understood that when Marston's Mills was looked at, that intersection at the base of the hill coming down from the library, that the one day they picked to look at that was the day of the best buddies race. So they had a lot of concerns about all the bikes, but of course, the bikes were there because it was the best buddies race. So I just hope that, you know, we're understanding our data, that, you know, one-off events like that don't skew our viewpoint of what's going on at these intersections.
Understood, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Starr?
Thank you. First, Mr. Cuthbert, I want to commend you for chasing down these funds and putting these grants together. I appreciate it very much. We all do. So what, how does this comport with what the Cape Cod Commission is doing? It seems like they started a similar transportation study for the whole Cape, looking at intersections that are having problems.
Yes, exactly. Oops, sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, go ahead.
Oh, exactly right. So they are operating their Vision Zero planning initiative, and this is why we're eligible for these opportunities. Actually, the Commission's actions have allowed for us to be eligible for these and created us to be in stronger standing when we applied for these grants. So yes, they are doing something very similar, and then we are, you know, bringing it down to the local level.
Okay, thank you. Another question, completely unrelated, but whatever happened with the intersection, Santuit Road and Route 28? I know Counselor Rapoletti had pushed that through. Is the design done?
Newtown? I think it's Newtown.
Newtown Road?
Santuit, Newtown.
Santuit, Newtown Road and Route 28.
Still a dangerous intersection.
Dan Santos, Director of Public Works. Yeah, I'll have to get back to you. I don't know what the status of that report is, but I know they did that work, and I'll just let you know what.
Okay, she's no longer here to ask, so I thought I'd ask.
Sure.
Thank you, appreciate it. I'm done.
Thank you. Anyone on my left? Any further discussion? Anyone on my right? Seeing none? Okay. Let's see, this is a majority vote. Madam Court?
Counselors, Turkelson?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yes.
Verdic?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Leveque?
Yes.
Ludkey?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Penn?
Yes.
Schnep?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Tamish?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you. Counselor Mendez, could you read in 2025-070?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is new business, item 2025-070. Appropriation order in the amount of $40,025 for the purpose of purchasing Pro Shop merchandise for resale. This is to be referred to a public hearing on 10/27/25.
Second.
Second? Okay. Roll call vote? Any discussion on that? No discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Counselors, Bloom?
Yes.
Verdic?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Leveque?
Yes.
Ludkey?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Penn?
Yes.
Schnep?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Tamish?
Yes.
Turkelson?
Yes.
That's unanimous.
Thank you. Counselor Crowe, could you read in 2025-071, please?
Certainly. This is item of new business, item number 2025-071. May be acted upon by a majority vote. Resolve approving a letter requesting Mass Development conduct a feasibility study on establishing a joint military and civilian airport at Joint Base Cape Cod.
Second.
Okay. This was submitted at the request of Counselor Ludkey. Did you want to start the discussion on that?
Oh, thank you, just trying to unmute myself here. Yeah, thank you, President Tamish. We've heard some good comments earlier, and Norm Weil from the Airport Commission, who I spoke to about this last week, he reminded us that on March 19th last year, the Airport Commission voted unanimously to support a regional transportation study. They backed that up by including the study in their strategy that they're currently finalizing. It's under their goal number three, objective 3.3. The town council followed suit on May 16th of last year, when we signed out a letter to the Cape Cod Commission, asking them to do this same regional transportation study. We offered in that letter that there would probably be benefit by supporting the efforts of Commissioner Mark Forrest. On December 9th of this past year, Mass Development issued an RFP to do a master plan for the contonment area of Joint Base Cape Cod. Those perhaps not familiar with the term, it's the area of the base, essentially where all the services are, you know, the housing, the shops, the airfield sits in there. It's kind of the working part. I think a lot of us are probably more familiar with the northern part of the base, where they've talked about the machine gun range. That has absolutely no play in this study by Mass Development. It's kind of like a little mini-city, and that's what Mass Development is going to study there. And they're working in concert with the commissioners, the Cape Cod Regional Commissioners, the Adjutant General, and the Massachusetts Military Asset and Security Strategy Task Force. And as part of that, they'll have to coordinate with all of the budding towns on there. So it's a very robust study of that. That was on December 9th. On December 17th, we had a request from the Regional Commissioners for the town to send a letter, and this is that letter, this is the response to that, to look at establishing the joint airfield there. And I think the airport has pointed out, that's not a regional transportation study, but it certainly is a key asset of that, and this is an amazing opportunity to get that done, but what I consider a competent authority. Finding competent authorities to do this level of planning is very difficult, and Mass Development has the reach, and I've mentioned, the Adjutant General is involved. So all of the issues that the Cape Cod Airport Commission brought up, I think they're in play here. So I am the proponent of this letter. It's been reviewed, and it is before you now. I think it's very simple, it's a feasibility study. It doesn't mention Gateway. I'll mention off the cuff, when you do a regional study, you know Plymouth is also looking to expand their runways. So I think they could benefit from this data. We're collecting data, and I was very happy to hear David Anthony talk about the feasibility study that was done when we acquired the Danforth property in the airport. And I consider, you know, that a little bit off topic, but my goodness, the foresight of the council members that bought that airport there, yes, they stopped housing from being built, that we need, but what an amazing asset that grass field is. And those of you who haven't ever seen an aircraft catch a tow, and I'm talking about the banner towers that go along our beaches, that I think is a quirky, nice thing that we do, they do that there, and it's incredible. It's kind of like a fighter landing on a carrier deck. They come in there and they catch the banner. And it's just incredible that we have that asset. And this has, just will inform decision-making, and I think it's important for us as a town council to make the best decisions with the best information. This is a rare opportunity to jump on a really well-thought-out planning document. They haven't had a master plan out there since 2013. This is, I just, you know, I come from a planning background, I find this an enormous opportunity, and nobody's casting aspersions on anybody. It's an opportunity to collect data and make better decisions. Thank you, President Tamish.
Thank you. Any further discussion on my right? Counselor Turkelson?
Thank you, President Tamish. I guess what I like about this is what Counselor Ludkey is saying, is the opportunity to have data, and I think if the Airport Commission's plans, you know, they're in their planning stages, have more data, that's helpful. And also, if you have a good idea in a program that's working, hopefully this data will help to further that and verify, and, you know, trust and verify. So I look forward to data, I think that's important, especially with such a large property that's been around for 100 years. So, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Penn?
Thank you, President Tamish. I would just like to make a very brief amendment and add the words economic development to the last sentence in the letter. We have a list there of possible areas of inclusion, including financial issues, legal considerations, operational capacity, regional benefit, community support, environmental impact, et cetera. I think economic development is missing from there, so I would offer that up for anybody who's interested in doing that. And I also want to add while I have the floor, that I agree with Counselor Ludkey about the feasibility study and the value of that on the Danforth property. There were critical decisions that were made as a result thereof, and I would think that in this situation, in this location, for this purpose, the same would happen from this feasibility study that I heartily support. So, thank you.
Thank you. So we have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second for an amendment?
We've got some other questions. Sure, I'll start. Thank you, President Tamish. I understand how this letter is written, that it appears to be a very simple request to do a feasibility study at a particular location.
Excuse me, Counselor?
I'm sorry.
I believe we have a motion regarding the amendment.
She didn't make a motion.
Did she make a motion?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes. Do we have a second for that motion?
I'll second it.
Second? Okay. Any discussion on the motion? To amend the last sentence, the way I read it would be JBCC support, comma, environmental impact, and economic development. So it'd be adding the words "and" economic development. Any discussion on that motion? Okay. Seeing none, Madam Court, this will be a vote on the amendment.
Counselors, Verdic?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Leveque?
Yes.
Ludkey?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Penn?
Yes.
Schnep?
No.
Starr?
Yes.
Tamish?
Yes.
Turkelson?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yes.
That's 11 yes.
Okay, thank you. So now, Counselor Schnep, if you'd like to discuss?
Thank you. As I was saying a few moments ago, that my concern is that while this appears to be a very simple request for a feasibility study, what I believe is behind it is a much larger question, and I'm not sure the forum for that, that we haven't had a forum to really discuss the future of the Cape Cod Gateway Airport, either at the council or in the community, and that requesting a feasibility study for a civilian military regional airport of significance preempts that conversation, or presumes that we've had that conversation. And I don't think we have. I'm not saying it's not a legitimate conversation to have, but I don't think we've had it. It has appeared in the newspaper and in other places that we've been requested to have this letter, but I think that it's sort of the other way around. I think there have been inquiries, legitimate inquiries, and the response to those inquiries have been said, it would be helpful to get a resolution of your entire legislative body for us to consider that. So that's how this has evolved and is before us tonight. I am concerned, based on some of the comments that were said tonight, some of the correspondence we've received, that the loss of our municipal airport would be, have significant consequences to our town. And so I think we need to have that larger conversation before we engage in asking another entity to do a feasibility study on a replacement airport, so.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Counselor Bloom?
Ever since I became a counselor, this issue has been nipping at my ankles. And when I first heard about this, I thought, okay, great, this is good, this, you know, we can put this to bed, one way or the other, you know? But I've heard people testify tonight, and one thing that's alarming to me is, you know, that this couldn't come at a worse time for the Airport Commission. And I'm just wondering, you know, what would be, in the Commission's view, what would be a timeline that might be better? I'm open to anything, and, you know, I agree that, you know, to have data in front of you is, you know, you can make decisions on that. I feel concerned, a little bit concerned, because the Commission seems to be coming from a place of weakness, you know, as if you're afraid that you're going to lose things, you know? And I don't like to see that, because you have a lot to, you know, feel good about in what you've done, and your fear, in a way, and I hate to, you know, get too psychological about this, but maybe you're not optimistic that the council will handle it in the way you'd like. You're afraid of what might happen down the road, and I think that all this, all these things going through my mind now make me want to slow this thing down a little bit and meet with people and find out, you know, first of all, you know, what will Mass Development do? You know, what are they going to do? What do we want from them? How do we bring the Commission into this thing? Or is it going to be just, is there going to be a wall, you know, between us if we do go with this, with this assessment? You know, I'm all for assessments, because you get data, but I don't want the Commission to feel, and the airport to feel like, you know, we're working against them. And I think when it comes down to it, in the end, the council will make the right decision. But I don't know where to go now, so that's all I have to say. I really can't offer anything constructive, it's just, I'm just uncomfortable having a vote today.
Thank you. Vice President Clark?
Thank you very much, President Tamish, and thank you very much for your insights. I do very much appreciate the work that the Airport Commission does and the airport staff,
and it is a big footprint in our community, for sure. Counselor Schnep referred to the paper. There was a correction, actually, that there was a misstatement, and that the upshot is that the Barnstable Town Council may ask Mass Development to undertake the study. So that was, there was an incorrect reference in the newspaper article the day before. But I would support this as a feasibility study made by a well-respected third party to yield information. It's not to take action, it's to bring information that we're not paying with our tax money and not paying with the airport funds, to my knowledge. And I think that with this information, once it's done, then we may very well find out, you know what? This airport deserves to be where it is, and now we have the data to back it up. And I think that would, that would be the confidence we need to, as Counselor Bloom said, put this to bed, put this, the running rumors aside. So I'm prepared to support this as Mass Development is able and willing to include this in their feasibility study of the whole Joint Base Cape Cod. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Penn?
Thank you. I just don't think we should put the cart before the horse. We should let the process take place. We should deal with what's before you and on the table right now, and don't go down the rabbit hole. You're changing the subject. The subject is about whether you're going to support the letter that requests a feasibility study, and if we support Mass Development doing it. This is a big regional project, and we definitely should support it. It has nothing to do with politics, who's on the commission, the purpose of the airport, or anything else. Okay, just let's look at what's on the table before us, and let's just deal with that. It's as simple as that. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Mendez?
Thank you, President Tamish. Unfortunately, preconceived notions come into things like this. When you have people who are advocating for the closure of the airport, then they come up with a letter, what are people going to assume? Simple. But the letter doesn't bother me. I mean, the which we call it doesn't bother me, what they want to do, the feasibility study, that doesn't bother me. But this, this is never, this airport is never going anywhere. The town doesn't have the finances to pay the fines and the money back to the FAA. We don't have it. We have a billion-dollar sewer project going on in this town right now. With everything else going on in this town, we don't have $90 million, $100 million to pay. The airport's not going anywhere. We can't afford to lose the 1,700 jobs, was it 1,700 jobs? Can't afford to lose the 1,700 jobs. The airport is profitable. Housing's never going to go there, because that's the busiest intersection in town, that rotary, Willow Street. The busiest. So the airport isn't going anywhere. So I'll vote to let the feasibility study go, but the airport isn't going anywhere. So we have to stop living in a fantasy world of people thinking that this is going to move. The town cannot afford it, period. And we have to look at things realistically. Yes, we have to look at things in dollars and cents. We have a lot of things this town is paying for right now on borrowed money. We can't afford to run the credit card up anymore. Are there maybe different ways to do things? Sure, we're all open to that, but let's not fool ourselves to think the airport is going anywhere, because it's not. We can't afford it as a town to pay for it to go someplace else. So that's all I'd like to say.
Thank you. Counselor Zett?
Thank you, President Tamish. Being a town council for the last eight years and being the president of the council, you establish relationships over time, and with different people, and they call you with their different concerns, and you build a certain level of trust. And what I see with the Airport Commission, it's obvious that there seems to be, and, you know, an adversarial relationship in regards to this letter, and the Airport Commission feeling that they need to defend themselves. It's not fear. It's hard work. It's knowledge, and it's their perception that what's happening is foolish, because of all the things that were, I mean, just given to us today, but a lot of these things I'm aware of, just from being around, right? So you have, you know, it's not public record, but we can read it in public record, if you like, all the reasons, and unfortunately, Wendy was under the impression that she could take time to read Representative Diggs, and then, you know, and I'm sorry for that, but I read that during the break, and there's a lot of good points there. So I think we need to recognize that, that there's an uncomfortableness there with our hard-working, well-qualified, who have actually been insulted by counselors, counselor, saying that they are self-interest. Their self-interest is overpowering their concern to support what's best for the town of Barnstable. By the way, that's what we're also supposed to do when we take an oath to protect Barnstable. So by, if this feasibility study, as we said, we should just look at it on its merits, at its whole, the way it looks, it's just a feasibility study for Joint Base Cape Cod to, so if we're going to keep our airport, and it's not about closing our airport, but we're going to do a feasibility study at Joint Base Cape Cod to create competition, possibly, or see that that's feasible for our airport, which would take away from, it doesn't make any sense. So even on its face value, it doesn't make any sense, and knowing that, and Counselor Mendez pointed it out, that certain councils have been already vocal about closing the airport, who are the most vocal about promoting this letter, why wouldn't their agenda change in the fact that they want to see the airport closed? So now, let's go to other surrounding communities. We got a letter from the former chair, David Sampson, of Sandwich, chair of their select board, saying, what's this? I read this article, what's happening? And he CC'd Mashpee, Falmouth, and Bourne to ask if they knew anything about Barnstable trying to initiate more air traffic on Joint Base Cape Cod. So I haven't gotten the response for that, but I have to perceive that even the conversations I've had during the MMA conferences past weekend, they have no idea that we're directing Mass Development, which isn't asking us for the letter, but we're requesting that they do this feasibility study without actually contacting the stakeholders that will be the recipients of this extra air traffic. Also talked to, now again, here's this perceived threat of closing down our airport, and if you ask lower Cape, now there's no, there's no commercial flights out of Provincetown anymore. Cape Air pulled that in the off-season. They don't open back up until the end of April again. So now they have to travel, if they want to do commercial, Cape Air, they travel to here in Hyannis. So this idea that now we're going to support a study, again, it could seem insignificant. It's a small, little pebble, but when you throw a small, little pebble, I don't care how, what body of water it is, it's going to have a rippling effect, and it's going to affect the perception of this body of government, and how we're trying to affect other places in our neighborhood, right? other places in our neighborhood, right? In our county, that we're trying to influence our county commission to move forward and recommend certain things on our behalf, when we haven't even contacted and communicated. And again, because again, it all comes back down to, we have to, we can't, we have to be transparent, right? There's that word again, the transparency. We're not being transparent. We're talking about closing our airport and moving our airport and merging our airport with somebody else, and we're not talking to all the stakeholders, which is the 15 communities, and we're asking the county to step in, and they represent all 15 communities. And I just think, I'm not in favor of this. I just think this, it hasn't been, the Airport Commission should be right there, and we should be doing a workshop discussing this, this has been handled incorrectly, it's been adversarial from the onset, it's been grandstanding in the newspaper, and I think it's time, we take a break. If we want to have the discussion, there's a right way to do it, and we can start that process now, but this isn't the way to do it. I would not be for this.
Thank you. Councilor Starr?
Thank you, President Tamish. I have to agree that the airport's never going to be moved, so we have to, we have to start with that. There's no sense in doing a feasibility study. I'm completely against it. If it was a regional transportation, countywide, looking at buses and ferries, that might be one thing, but I wouldn't support our, I don't want to send support to anybody that we are thinking about moving our airport or consolidating with someone else. It's just, like, like Councilor Mendez says, we can't afford it. We can't afford to buy the 630 acres. And, you know, we can't afford to have an airport that's 37 minutes west of here, you know? If you live in Chatham, it's further west, you know? If you live in Provincetown, you're in trouble. So I'm against this at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Levesque?
Thank you. I wanted to kind of look at what we're saying here. It's almost like we're conducting the feasibility study. We're bringing up all of these issues. And to Charlie Bloom's point, which was really good, the airport commissioners have brought up some great questions, and I think all of those would very much inform the study. I think they have a great deal of expertise. They've demonstrated that in their planning and their strategy, and why wouldn't they help to inform the study? And I also think the timing is very good now because we have a master plan in place. The environmental impact assessment has been done. It's now entering into the Cape Cod Commission. Phase one of that master plan is, I think, about $119 million. That doesn't include the terminal. It doesn't include proposed corporate jet hangars. There's a proposal to vastly change the terminal, to add three jet bridges. I think we're, I mean, I, my perception is, and I'm the liaison to the Airport Commission, I've read all their documents, I've read every single one of them, and I think the timing is perfect. I think we need to inform our decision-making before we go forward with what's proposed in the master plan. You know, I don't think it's a better time, and why, you know, why wouldn't we have them involved? Of course they would be involved. And nobody, as I say, we're seen to be parsing out the feasibility study, which is what we're relying on, the expertise of Mass Development and the military folks, and the Cape Cod Commission and the regional commissioners that have worked so hard to put this together. As I said, it's really a rare opportunity, and I hope, as Felicia said, we don't attach more to than what's in front of us. I, I, I don't know what else to say. I think we should do the study. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Councilor Bloom?
I haven't seen anything as far as, you know, how much it's going to cost. Is there any, are there any figures on that?
We're asking Mass Development to do the study. There would be no cost to us if...
There would be no cost?
No.
No. So we are not spending taxpayers' money on this?
Mass Development would be, but it's not our tax, it's our tax money.
All right.
Unfortunately, when you come into something with a preconceived notion, people pay attention. Is this going to cost this business at the airport? Are people going to be apprehensive because they're going to think that the airport may be moving? This is what happens when you state a position and then you want to have a study. It's just common sense. Would I move a business to a place where I thought might be hostile, or I'm not sure how the town's going, if the town is going to move the location I want that business to be at? Of course I wouldn't. So you have to think more than just a study. Because like I said, the study on its face is harmless. It really is. But what does that convey to the people we want to do business with? What does that convey to the people who may want to come and do business at that airport? If they perceive the local government is not behind the airport, then an airline or a small, a small airline, a regional airline, isn't going to come to that airport. We have to think about things like this. We just can't think of things in the state of what we want or what we think it may be. Would I love to move that airport? My wish would be, yeah. I hear those planes all day long. They fly over my house all the time, absolutely, but it's not the right thing to do for the town. And if we want that airport to thrive and continue to be profitable, continue to employ people who wouldn't have good jobs unless they were at that airport, then we cannot put things out like this. Yes, the feasibility study on its face is very benign, but it's what it tells to the people that may want to do business with us. What it tells to the public is what they're going to receive, the perception's going to be, is we want a feasibility study because we want to move the airport. That's what it's going to be. So let's not mince words, let's be honest with people, and let's look at it for what it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Councilor Starr?
Yes. Thank you. Again, I'm going to say, I'm not, I'm not for moving the airport. I think it should stay, it's going to stay where it is, and it's going to stay where it is. Doing a feasibility study sounds wonderful because, quote, "Somebody else is going to pay for it." We know we're all going to pay for it in our taxes. A feasibility study to collect data that's going to sit on a shelf does nothing for me because it's not going anywhere, and I don't want to give anybody the impression that it might go somewhere. So I agree with Councilor Mendez, we shouldn't, we shouldn't move this forward because it sends the wrong message. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
President Tamish?
Councilor Levesque?
Would it be possible, maybe, to hear from Director Service in regards to, you know, maybe her feedback in regards to what this might ripple effect it might have?
Katie, would you like to make a statement? I recognize you for that purpose.
Thank you for having me here tonight. Katie Service, Airport Manager. I just want to be clear on a couple of points that everyone has made, and I know that this is a topic that has been floating around for quite some time. But as a department head for the town, I have the fiscal responsibility to ensure that the viability of the airport and to secure funding for that airport to ensure its operation through our enterprise fund. Since I've been Airport Manager, I've been able to raise our revenues by 106 percent, 106 percent, 6.2 million to 12.8. I do this because the FAA and Mass Dynamics also requires that I have a fiscal responsibility as an Airport Manager to make sure that the airport is functioning within the national airspace system as it should. Boards, commissions, committees, you two have a fiscal responsibility to ensure that the town acts in a manner that is financially responsible for all of its departments. A closure of the airport, as we already heard, could require the repayment of over $99 million in grants, that's money as of today. When our Airport Commission signs the next grant, that dollar amount goes up. 639 anchors at fair market value in the middle of Hyannis would have to be purchased by the town of Barnstable. My reserves right now are 13 million. That is not going to pay back what would be required here. So I agree with some of the counselors, Councilor Starr, and what he said, Councilor Levesque, and Mendez, that the payments that we would have to think about as a town, given the fact that we have a lot of things on our plate right now as a town, we talk about improving our wastewater facility, that is going to cost us an exorbitant amount of money over the next several years. That's what's on the town's docket, to include the airport on the town's docket for additional funds that would be needed to close the airport when it is functioning and functioning responsibly, bringing in American Airlines, who by the way, added two more additional flights to Philadelphia and to Chicago. Property improvements and investments by our tenants would have to be paid back by the town. I have just signed, almost all of our leases are either in a 20-year agreement right now or they're about to be in a new 20-year agreement. Many of those leases, to go back to Councilor Mendez, about apprehension for development. Many of these new leases have asked our attorneys to put in clauses that refer to the closure of the airport and what they would get in return if that were to happen. They're already thinking about this. In response to Councilor Bloom, afraid, no, we're not afraid, we have obligations to meet, and we have fiscal obligations to meet. In response to Felicia Penn about a big regional project, my response to that would be, then why haven't we included other towns within Cape Cod? In response to looking for data, Councilor Turkelson, looking forward to that data, the airport has completed a master plan study in which the state and the federal agencies have reviewed that study. They looked at the feasibility of closing the airport and going to Joint Base Cod, and it was determined to be unjustifiable, and they excused it from further study. That's one study. A second study that was done is our environmental review that was just completed that determined the same thing. And by the way, in 2000, when this was brought up, that same determination that it was unjustifiable and unfeasible by state and federal agencies were brought forward then. So I agree that if there is some type of study that's to occur, it cannot be aviation only, it has to look at our entire transportation system, and that is what our commission asked for. Back in March, when they made the decision to look at a study, the study was to look at all transportation, not just the closure of Cape Cod Gateway Airport. And lastly, Councilor Levesque said, the best decisions is what she's looking for and the best information. The reports that we have already done, the reports that have been paid by tax dollars, to do the master plan, to do the environmental review, the study that we asked our attorneys to look at to see what feasibility of closing the airport would look like so that we would be informed, those have all been done. If we want to do another study, it's going to look at those same things that we've already looked at, and that's the frustration that I have as an Airport Director. We've been honest and open with you from the start. We looked at this airport and said, we're going to develop this airport the best we can, but we know we're constrained. And I've said from the beginning, constraint is good because it means that it's the best thing for Cape Cod. We do not want to be Logan South. That's not our determination. If you open up a facility that's a commercial facility at Joint Base Cape Cod, their runways are over 9,500 feet. They cannot deny any aircraft that wants to go in there that can safely land or take off on a 9,500-foot runway. You are creating Logan South. So ask yourself if the 15 towns on the Cape want to go ahead and do that, or did they want to stay with the known horse in the race, which is Cape Cod Gateway Airport, that has developed an airport that is balanced and within reason for our community? And that's what we've tried to do from the start. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Any further comment? Councilor Schnep first?
Thank you, President Tamish, and thank you, Katie, for providing us with a lot of grounded information. I just want to ask my fellow counselors, when they're considering their vote, to know that this is not a benign gesture, that this communicates something much more beyond asking for a simple feasibility study. It has consequences for the ongoing health of our airport. And as someone who lives in the western part of town and was, I guess, mildly happy when we actually lost some of the military aircraft to Westfield or the Western Mass, I was okay with that because I heard a lot of air traffic. And so, I mean, I know this is a, you know, I know Hyannis carries the burden now, so I'm not saying, but there are a lot of consequences if this airport gets moved to another part. And I think the point made that the airport, excuse me, runway length could invite much larger air traffic, and we have not had any conversation with our neighboring towns. Shame on us. And, you know, Mass Development will receive our request if it goes farther than, you know, farther tonight, but I could imagine that there will be some political blowback, and maybe they will choose not to do one even if we request it. Thank you.
Councilor Berdick?
I'll move the question.
Okay. We have the request to move the question, or motion to move the question. Madam Clark?
Counselors, Clark?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Levesque?
Yes.
Levesque?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Penn?
Yes.
Schnep?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Tamish?
No.
Turkelson?
Yes.
Bloom?
No.
Berdick?
Yes.
The yeses have it. It's nine. I'm sorry, it's 10 to 2, yeah.
Okay. Okay, the question has been moved. I would have liked to have made a statement on that, but I guess that's not going to happen. So we will now vote on the resolve to send the letter as amended. Madam Clark?
Counselors, Crowe?
Yes.
Levesque?
No.
Levesque?
Yes.
Mendez?
No.
Penn?
Yes.
Schnep?
No.
Starr?
No.
Tamish?
Yes.
Turkelson?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yes.
Berdick?
No.
Clark?
Yes.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, yes.
Okay. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second? All right. Has to be a roll-call vote to adjourn?
Counselors, Levesque?
Yes.
Levesque?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Penn?
Yes.
Schnep?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Tamish?
Yes.
Turkelson?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yes.
Berdick?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
We're done.